Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. I believe the last time I spoke before you all, it was late August or mid-August. And we'd gone down, just an annual recap, the one large outstanding item that we were diligently working through was the selection and appointment of a permanent executive director for our organization. And I am pleased to announce that we have done that. I know that Mark Ekman has met with several of you individually. He's hit the ground running. I think this is his third week on the job, and we're really thrilled to have him. And it's a pleasure to introduce Mr. Mark Ekman.
Thank you, Monty, for that introduction. Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure. I'm very pleased to have this opportunity to lead the Convention and Visitors Bureau into its next chapter, and appreciate the fact that you all have gone to great effort to make that chapter possible. I'm going to give a brief bio in terms of my history, as well as an inkling of things that are going to be coming in the days and weeks and months ahead. First of all, let me tell you that I'm originally from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Moved to Iowa during my high school years, graduated from the University of Iowa with a degree in journalism, with a focus on public relations and a minor in business. It was there that I did my internship with the Iowa City Corvus Convention and Visitors Bureau, not knowing that that was going to be my life's work that early on. And came across my first job opportunity while doing that internship. And that job opportunity was with the villages of Amburran County. That was at the height of the farm crisis. They were looking at diversifying their local economy. And by working collaboratively with eight municipalities, a county, and a local foundation, we were able to do that, even though the board was very straightforward with me and said, "You may not have a job after the first year if you're not successful." Well, we were successful enough to be named Tourism County of the Year after the first two and a half years that I was there, and were able to establish ourselves. From there, I went to the Iowa Tourism Office, where I worked nearly seventeen years in all facets of tourism and travel. Started off as a group travel manager, but also was involved in attracting international visitors to Iowa, as well as establishing the Iowa Ag Tour Manual, along with also creating and placing advertising, along with selling partnerships, and also planning events like the Iowa Tourism Conference that was recently held here in Council Bluffs. In fact, as I was remarking to the Arena Commission last week, I can remember the first time that the Tourism Conference came here in 1996, when it was held in what is now Harvee's, or excuse me, Harvees, but was Harvee's back then. And then, of course, came back in 2005, when the conference was held for the first time at the MAC. After spending seventeen years there with the Iowa Tourism Office, I did some consulting. And then, four and a half years ago, I decided to go back to the local level, where I was hired as the Director of the Otomo Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. And in that instance, not unlike Amburran County, and you could say in similar instances here for Council Bluffs, it was an attempt at rebooting their tourism efforts in Otomo. They've had a bureau for a number of years, but their overhead was too high. They were ineffective in terms of what they were trying to do. And so, even though the board had approved a budget that was going to go into the red that very first year that I was there, I made sure that we didn't go into the red. And we were in the black for the entire four and a half years that I was there. But also didn't limit ourselves to strictly heads and beds. We also worked in a collaborative way across the community, as well as the county, working with a lot of different groups. In fact, I served on the Riverfront Renaissance Task Force, along with worked on a group that was trying to reclaim and rejuvenate the Otomo Downtown Theaters. So there's a lot of things that we did as a catalyst for change, didn't limit ourselves just to travel and tourism, although that was a lot of my efforts. Accomplishments at the end of my four and a half years was, for the last two and a half years, or two years, I should say, we set records in terms of hotel motel tax collections, as well as also landed the right to host the Iowa Tourism Conference. In that particular instance, we drew probably the biggest competitor on the block. Being in central Iowa, we had to compete against the Greater Des Moines CBB and Iowa Event Center, but did so in a very creative and collaborative sense. We reached out to our neighbor Fairfield, also known as our nemesis. We sometimes have some headaches there, but we took the opportunity to work with them to land the conference. And by the time they had left not only our facility at Bridgeview Center, but also the Iowa Event Center, they had decided to come to Otomo. We're going to be hosting them, or I should say, they are going to be hosting them in 2015. But they are certainly doing a lot of things there to really reform themselves, remake themselves, reimagine themselves in a way that they're a brand-new community and destination. In the coming weeks and months ahead, I'm going to be trying to engage a whole lot of community partners and stakeholders by conducting a SWOT analysis over the next 100 days. And in fact, that's the name of my program of work and outreach, is 100 Days, by which I'm going to ask people to tell me what they think the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are for not only the Bureau, but for Council Bluffs, so that I better understand it and can be better prepared to deal with some of those opportunities and threats. I look forward to that opportunity of getting to know the community better, and also look forward to finding out how the Bureau could be that better catalyst for change. It's evident that that can happen. All you have to do is look into Dubuque and see that that Bureau, along with the city and along with the Dubuque Historical Society, totally remade the Iowa, or excuse me, not the Iowa, but the Ice Harbor area of downtown with the Americas River Project. And I think those kind of things are possible, and a collaborative approach to things that I think the Bureau is going to undertake, like I say, in the next coming weeks, months, and hopefully years ahead. I look forward to talking to you some more, and certainly looking forward to talking to those council members I haven't had a chance to talk one-on-one with. Thank you.
Anybody have questions for Mark?
I tell you, Mark came in and introduced himself to me. And one of the promises I made when I got elected was that I was intending to do an image campaign to change people's self-assessment of Council Bluffs, our residents. And so, Mark introduced himself, and I said, "Tomorrow morning, we're meeting on the image campaign, and preliminary to talk with Wendy and I." And found him not only not to shrink back, but to have good valid opinions, and sometimes contrary opinions, and explained them well and made good sense. And when he left the room, I said, "Wow, I think we've got a good one here." So.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a common thread between Otomo and Council Bluffs, in that have same of the, some of the very same issues. And as a matter of fact, Otomo was looking at a community perception campaign, too. So I very much understand the need for that, the value of that. That cuts across not just benefiting tourism and business interests, but benefits the community overall. It makes the community more appealing place to live and work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I believe we have a hearing in regards to cigarette violation with Eddie's on 3434 Nebraska Avenue.
I'd like to start with Don Bowermeister from my office, seeing how we got to this point.
Good afternoon, Mayor Walsh, City Council Members. Don Bowermeister with the City Attorney's Office. On April 10th, members of our Police Department with the Par Unit performed some tobacco compliance checks. And Eddie's at 3434 Nebraska Ave., owned by Gasmart USA, did sell tobacco to a seventeen-year-old. Was controlled with Police Department supervision. On May 5th, the employee did show up in court across the street and pled guilty to that charge pursuant to the state codes. The local authority is authorized to impose a civil penalty of $300. I filed paperwork to that effect, so we're asking, I'm asking you to impose that penalty. I've had a chance to speak with Gasmart USA out of Overland Park. Prior to today, I sort of explained to them how this works. It's pretty clear that the Iowa Code makes this a mandatory fine. It's not discretionary, with the caveat that if a business decides to exercise basically an affirmative defense, that the employee at the time was certified through these classes, that they can avoid the penalty. Unfortunately, for Gasmart USA today, they've already exercised that affirmative defense in March of this year. So if there were to be another penalty, another violation in the next two years, the penalty goes up to $1,500, or thirty days' no tobacco sales. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. And is there anyone?
I think there's somebody here from Gasmart.
Can I feel her?
I'm here representing my employer, Eddie's Gasmart, and they just wanted us to let you...
Can you give us your name?
Oh, sorry. Kim Fielder. I'm the DM, General Manager here in Council Bluffs.
And then the Gasmart address maybe for...
3434 Nebraska Ave., number 57. The gentleman sold to a minor that night. We do go through a lot of stuff. We do the We Pledge program. Every employee has to do the program for the cigarettes and the alcohol. There's numerous paperwork in the new hire packet that they go through to sign, so they know that, you know, if they sell to a minor, they're fired. They know about the fines, that it's all on them. And so, our company just wanted to let everybody know that we're really aware of it, and we make sure that they know. And it just slips through the cracks that they don't pay attention and do what they're supposed to be doing. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice question.
Yep.
So who pays the fine, then? The Gasmart or the employee?
The license holder is the one, the fine over in the court, care of by the employee. The fine, the civil penalty goes on the business owner.
So it's like $600 together, then?
Is the civil penalty for the individual that...
I'm not sure what was actually leveled by the court.
Oh, yeah, good point.
The defendant at the courthouse was found guilty by a magistrate and sentenced to a fine of $100 for certain charge of court costs, which basically comes out to be $195. This is a separate civil action. So the criminal penalty was $100 plus court costs, if that answers your question.
And then, $300 is on top of that?
Yes, that's correct. And that goes against the license holder, as Mr. Wade said, which would be Gasmart USA in this instance.
Okay. But they're not objecting to paying it?
You have to ask them that question.
She's shaking, she's shaking her head, "No."
No, they just want people to be aware of that.
Okay. I just wanted clarification.
I do appreciate very much that you've come today, ma'am, and talked to, there, there we are. That you've come today as representative of your organization, and that a program is in place, and that this is not some sort of, we're flagrantly not trying to follow the law situation. And I appreciate you coming today and letting us know about that, and how steps are taken to follow the law. Thank you very much.
The council cannot take any action at this committee session, but I would ask that under other receiving, a motion be made, one way or the other.
So the motion would just be to accept the payment of penalty and fine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We're going to review the agenda, and I'm going to flip XLT Inc. around, because the other discussion may be longer, and I was just talking about the main meeting like last time. And so, does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
I have one. Just a little bit of clarification on 3C. Are we, is the amendment, because it wasn't very clear, it talked about project information and/or like a financial data. So what actually changed? Did the project change? Are there different stores coming? Or is it just merely the financial portion of it?
There really is no changes to the financial aspect of this project. What initiated this was the developer's desire to use some financing through the Iowa Finance Authority, which we will be, I think, assigning perhaps our TIF proceeds to that on their behalf. And there will be some tweaks to a development agreement in January. But when I and my staff looked at the previous amendment that was done several years ago, the amendment at that time really did not address the total amount of TIF financing. So although the development agreement did, the plan did not, and it should have. So we're taking this opportunity to essentially correct that situation.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
I think the other thing to understand is, this will be annually certified also. I forget the actual number of years remaining on the TIF. So only that amount that's being certified each year would go against the city's debt service numbers.
That's a helpful clarification. Could you build that into the staff communication for the next meeting, just as a reminder to us?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Other questions on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings for A through F? I'm sorry, through E. And if you have questions on 24th Street, representatives from XLT are in the audience. Nothing? All right. How about, let's skip 4F for now and go to...
Can I go back? So the comments on...
Waste your time.
I missed it? Darn. So the neighbors in the meeting on the XLT, they were, everyone satisfied?
I don't know that that's a fair assessment. Nate was there longer than I were.
Okay.
There was a meeting that was held with neighborhood residents in Twin City. I'd estimate fifteen as an approximate number of people there. Some expressed that they were happy with what they heard that night. Three had left before I left, and I had a conflict at seven. I didn't get out until 7:30 or so. Nate was still there, and so he may have a little different take, but...
Similar. I think it's fair to say that there probably wasn't more than one or two, maybe three people who weren't made more comfortable or more agreeable to the project by Mike Dellinger coming along with, I'm sorry, I forget the name of the gentleman, engineer.
He's like Madonna. He just knows Charlie.
First name? Knows Charlie, all right. I would say that there are a lot of folks who there who still don't particularly care for it. I'd say the main reason would be the height. There was a lot of appreciation for that, where it would be sited, and the amount of space in between. And, but there was, I would say, if there's any remaining objection that a lot of people still had, and by a lot, I mean probably two-thirds, I'd say, would be that it's just too tall. And then about a one-third, I'd say, it's fair to say, regardless of how they feel about the height, and most of those folks seemed to not particularly care for it. They thought the economic benefits outweighed it, so they supported it, I would say, more outright. So it was kind of a split decision. I didn't, I really can't say more, maybe that's not even one or two people, but at most, one or two people who weren't more sympathetic to the project afterwards. But certainly, there are several who still, in the end, don't support it.
Okay. So in the public hearing being tonight, there may be people...
They did mention, I'd say, five or six of them mentioned they'd come to speak, so I suppose we'll probably hear from them.
Okay. And then, Marcy, on the minutes, it didn't, I didn't think it clearly reflected that the motion was to concur with the Planning Commission height recommendation? Did I miss that in the minutes?
Well, yeah, there's, the staff had a different...
Right. Exactly. And my motion was for the Planning Commission, but it didn't really mention that in the minutes, and we should probably be accurate on that.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the public hearings, with the exception of F?
I just had a quick question on 4A. Is the 3313, does that then cover any in-all cost city involved in that? 657A?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance for second read. Any questions? Anything on the, excuse me, anything on the resolutions?
Yes, I'm going to be abstaining on 6D. At the last meeting, I was confused on which items were brought forward by the Chamber or the XLT Company themselves, and which were brought forward by Advance Southwest Iowa. So until I could straighten it out, I abstained on all three of those. So tonight, I now understand that it was only the item that's 6D that was brought forward by Advance, so I will abstain on that because I am on that board. So the others were not. They were brought forward by the company or the Chamber.
So DN, D1?
6D is the only one I'll be abstaining on.
Not D1?
Do you want part of the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll take it as one motion, so...
Everything on D, I would be.
On 6A, I see Doug Drummey's here. Did you want to speak to the calendar 2015 year budget?
And before you start, can I, can I...
We've already talked to him about it.
We have?
Yeah, and I'd like to address it.
Okay. Because that was, yeah.
I think it's important for clarification purposes.
I appreciate that. That headline was kind of shocking.
Yeah, I understand. First of all, my name is Doug Drummey, General Manager, Council Bluffs Water Works, 10,000 North 25th Street. I do have trustee Mike Wallner, who's also our Vice Chairman of the Board of Trustees. And I think it might not hurt just to review a little bit the body itself, the Board of Trustees. And first of all, it is formed under the Code of Iowa as what is known as a utility board. And the members are appointed by the council. They're nominated by the mayor, and then the council approves those board members, and they serve six-year terms. So under the Code of Iowa, the board has the authority in all respects to operate and administer the waterworks. And that means that they can raise rates, they can set policy, approve resolutions, they can purchase land, they can condemn land. The same powers as what the council has, the board has those same very powers. Now, the one thing they cannot do, and that is levy taxes, but they can raise rates. And the board did that very, that same, that very same thing on November 18th. On November 18th, the board held a public hearing, and they adopted the 2015 budget. Then they approved a rate increase that is effective January 1st, 2015. That rate increase was a 6% rate increase. The council is not approving a rate increase tonight. That rate increase was approved on November 18th, is effective on January 1st, 2015, and it's been published in the paper, according to law. And so, on that date, that 6% rate increase will go into effect. Now, what the council is doing is approving the budget that has been adopted by the Board of Trustees. And so, in a sense, what the board is, the council is doing is confirming that the board has done their job, their fiduciary responsibility, and that is to have a public hearing and adopt the budget, and then that budget is submitted to the council for their approval. Now, we hope that the council has full support and confidence that the board is going to adopt a budget, that they have taken some time and effort to, and thought, and put forward a reasonable and considered budget. And so, when the council gets it, we have to have to have the council approve that budget by the code, and that has to then be submitted to the state for approval that that has happened. So that's, in essence, what you're doing today. I'm more than happy to discuss the reasons for the rate increase, and what the budget has in it, why the board took the decision to increase the rates. The main reason is, is that expenses are growing faster than revenues are. Without the rate increase, and even with the rate increase, in fact, we'll see a nearly $900,000 reduction in our, in our, or not revenues, in our reserves, excuse me, in our reserves. And so, the board felt it was, you know, incumbent upon them, make sure that those reserves don't drop any further. The board did approve a resolution in the past that they would maintain at least three months of operating expenses and debt service in their reserves, and those are unrestricted reserves, so that we can use for circumstances such as the flood of 2011, so that we have adequate sources of funding to do all the projects that we're doing. This year, we are doing approximately $3 million in capital improvements that include land acquisition. Fortunately, through the state SRF funding, we're getting about $1,156,000 in zero-interest loans for that purpose, so that's a good deal for us and our customers. The rest of the capital improvements have to do with water main replacements. About $1.5 million will go for that. And then there's other expenses that we have. We have numerous other facilities. We have equipment that we have to purchase. So besides the land acquisition, we're going to be spending about $2 million on other capital improvements. So without the rate increases, you know, we would be drawing down those reserves even more. So the rate increase is designed to keep us from falling below that three months unrestricted reserves. And we hope that this will be able to kind of keep us in a position that we won't go lower than what we already are. We hope to have a good sales year. We never know what the sales year will be like. This year happened to be, this last year, 2014, was rainy. We had a cool summer. Revenues didn't meet expectations. We had one of the largest industries in the community that shut its doors, that resulted in lost revenue that we weren't expecting. So there was a number of things that happened this last year that did impact our revenue stream that were unexpected, and we hope that that turns around this coming year. I'm more than happy to address any other questions the council member has about our budget. I can certainly understand the concern about being portrayed as the ones that are raising the rates, and I want to reiterate, the council does not raise the rates. The Board of Trustees raised the rates, and what the council is doing is approving our budget.
Doug, can you put it in dollars, in cents, of what the average waterworks person pays?
I did have that. Of course, it always depends on who is average.
Yeah.
Just based on an average customer that uses about 65,000 gallons of water over a year's time.
Is that a homeowner?
Yeah. Just an average residential customer.
Okay.
Yeah. This isn't commercial, this isn't industrial. They will see a $16.27 increase over what they paid in 2014. $16.27, that's a $1.34 per month. Now, that's our average customer. Now, our minimum bill customer, which we have about 25% of our minimum bill customers, they use about 32,000 gallons of water. Their bill will go up $8.22 over a year's time. So that's about 68 or 69 cents per month. We still believe that we provide a very high-value service and high-quality product to our customers. Obviously, larger industrial customers are going to pay considerably more for this water rate increase, depending on who they are.
So it's safe to say if I cut back and buy one less bottle of water a month?
That's about, that would be correct, Mayor. Yes, a bottle of water. And just, that's a good point. I might just add that right now, a gallon of water costs our customers less than a nickel. It's actually 4.4 cents. I might add, too, that our rate increase, as compared to other cities of comparable size, I know that Des Moines increased their rate 7%. I know that MUD increased their rates 5%. This is, you know, we are all challenged by infrastructure needs, and the big one for us, we have a lot of important assets that are above ground, but the most important asset that we have is below ground with the 300 miles of water main. It costs anywhere from, at the minimum, $100 to maybe even up to $300 a foot, depending on where the construction is taking place to replace water main. But when you have 300 miles of water main, and 100 miles of it is approaching 100 years of age, then that means we have a lot of work to do with replacing water mains. This is going to be an ongoing effort. This will go long beyond my time with the Council Bluffs Water Works. This is a 50-year effort, and really a never-ending effort. But this is going to be expensive, and it's going to continue. And even at the $1.5 million that we're going to spend on water main improvements in conjunction with city projects, we are... in conjunction with city projects, we still have a lot more work to do beyond that.
Doug, when was the last time there was an increase? Do you remember what percent it was?
Six percent last year.
It was just last, I was thinking it was recent, and it was the same amount.
And it's been the board's position that to do more frequent increases at the least, you know, amount as possible to keep that percentage down as low as we can. Instead of waiting four or five years, and then all of a sudden we are stuck with doing a 30, 40, or 50 percent increase, we just don't think that's the direction that we should go, so the board has chosen to take a position of more frequent or lesser amount.
And I know that you don't have control over what the paper prints, but is there a way to maybe put in big letters, bold, in your next press release that the City Board of, Water Board of Trustees instead of city? I mean, you may have, you may have done that, but, but, you know, again, I know it's not your.
I did my best trying to do that, but I will definitely reemphasize that with the press, that the rate increase was approved by the Board of Trustees, goes into effect January first, and the council does not approve the rate increase.
Okay.
I don't want to make it sound that we don't want to have input from people. Naturally, we do want to have input on these sort of things, and the council is important to have input from. But the board also has the authority to increase those water rates on its own authority.
Well, but the, when it's presented in the paper like that, then the comments come to us, and I had a lot of people comment.
I regret that that happened, yeah. I'd rather have you point them to us.
Yeah.
Yes.
I wasn't pointing your fingers, I don't even know, I don't even know who wrote the article, Tim.
I did, okay, I didn't do the headline, but.
That's a very good point, headlines aren't done by the author generally.
Well, now that, now that would be fair. Ticked them around enough here, let me shift to a different item. And we've discussed before about the potential future costs of regulatory compliance.
Yes.
And, and I'm concerned about those trends in the future and the amount of infrastructure
We are, too.
costs. So since we've last chatted, what, how's, how's the landscape changed, if any, and how, how does the Water Works Board and your office help to mitigate some of that threat?
Well, we have been, and I guess this is as good a time as any to discuss the issue, and I'll try to keep it as concise as possible, but this has been a 12-year issue for us. And just for the council to know is that our water treatment plan on North Twenty-Fifth Street is what we call a lime softening plant. We use lime, which comes from limestone, that allows us to soften the water. We've been there since 1952, and we've been discharging the lime solids to the river all this time. The D N R has decided in their wisdom that we should not do that anymore, while at the same time, other states, including Nebraska, Missouri, and Kansas, are allowing similarly-situated utilities to do that same discharging practice. Omaha, case in point, M U D has a plant that is 10 times larger than ours upstream from us, just a few miles, and they discharge the same thing into the river, but they've been allowed by their Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality to do that under a permit. Our Iowa Department of Natural Resources entails, has told us that we must not discharge anymore, we, with strict limitations, and that we expect to cost our customers $30 million in capital costs and operating cost. We have not exhausted all remedies right now, but I can tell you that we are appealing it to the D N R, and we have a hearing before an administrative law judge on March 5th. We also intend to meet with the other delegates of the, of our legislature, and we have engaged them to also engage the D N R, hopefully in a positive way, that we'll see that they can do something different. We know that they are legally empowered to issue a permit that would allow us, under a best management practices scenario, to continue to discharge, and that is what our goal is. And again, we may be headed to a court hearing in this, and at the end of the day, I don't know whether we win or lose.
Well, I appreciate that, and if you can come back this evening and possibly repeat that, that eloquent pitch, I think it would be very helpful to the public to really understand what sort of potential cost risks you're facing in this, and how that could impact the public later on down the road.
If that's what the council desires, then I'd be more than happy to.
Up to you, but again, I thought it, I thought it was very important information, and I want to make sure that as many people as possible understand that.
Doug, you happen to know, my understanding is, the current position of the Iowa D N R is that cities will be held to a 100% strict standard above a certain size, but that agricultural interests are just strongly encouraged to reduce their amount of pesticides in the water, but there's really no enforcement whatsoever against them.
I think Greg has a better, that comes under more wastewater treatment plant side than
I see.
the drinking water side.
I wasn't sure.
And I think Greg is dealing with similar issues.
And similar dollars.
Yeah, similar dollars.
And I think that's my understanding, and I'm sure there'll be something where we'll need, I don't want him to come up just for that, if maybe Greg could mention that, if he happens to know. But some people have asked, and I think it's important to know, the choices the states made as to who shoulders the burden and who doesn't. And it seems, from my understanding, that folks such as our residents have been chosen to pay for everybody else. That's my opinion.
Fair assessment.
Is that fair?
Other questions for Doug?
Thanks for explaining all that to us, so that way we can better answer questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, other resolutions related questions?
Do we know why the bids were so high on the storm sewer rehab? The Mesquite Creek was about 6.8% higher than engineer estimate. I mean, it's a big number, but it's not a huge variance.
You're speaking of the North Twenty-Eighth Street?
Twenty-Eighth Street.
Phase one?
Yes.
Short answer, no.
Okay.
That's the second time we've attempted to bid this project. We redesigned it with what we believe were cost-saving ideas. We did contact the contractors to kind of get feedback, and it has a lot to do with availability and other, short, short number of contractors and a lot of work out there these days. So we're competing with a lot of other projects that are out there. This isn't an easy job, boring a large diameter pipe under the interstate, you know, it's not easy, it takes some specialized equipment, and it's not, in the realm of that, micro-tunneling and tunneling under interstate, it's not that big of a job. So to attract a contractor from nationwide, to come in and do 300 feet is just not that attractive, and the prices reflect that. I don't have an answer today on how we're going to try to repackage it, but I have a few ideas. One of them would be to actually include phase two with the project, which would increase the cost, not necessarily the budget. It may attract more contractors because it then becomes a larger, you know, we're looking at $5 million project or a $4 million project rather than a one and a half million project. Those kind of ideas, maybe we can attract more people by increasing the size. We're also going to open up discussions with I dot again to see if they would allow us to do some things that may save some money.
So this doesn't impact the project, I mean, it's, because it's going to be delayed?
Yes, I mean, it does affect the project of the overall program because one phase is going to be delayed, and the future phases can't really proceed until this phase gets done.
But that, I mean, how big of a negative impact is that?
It's been that way for 50 years, so it's, now it's going to be 51, I guess.
Okay.
You decide.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other questions on the other bid?
Thank you. Any other questions on the resolutions? Applications and permits?
Chief, do you have any concerns with regard to the renewal of G B C Chobar on South Twenty-First? It has a couple of violations, and I didn't know if you, in your professional opinion, you thought it had any bearing on whether their liquor license should be renewed? Sure, glad to. One of the liquor renewal applications is with regard to seven B one, G B C Chobar on South Twenty-First. It had a couple of violations this year, and I was just wondering if from the department's, police department's perspective, if there's any concern as to the renewal of this license?
Not at this point, we'll monitor that and continue to do checks on it to make sure they're in compliance.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right. So for those in the audience, we are going to talk about the rental inspection program, and so if you're here for that purpose, please stick around. If you're not here for that purpose, you're not required to stick around, but if you want to, you're more than welcome to.
Here's two chocolates from two weeks ago. I might eat the sea salt caramel. Don't judge my throwing skills.
Okay, we are.
Or like a girl.
Four F, and I don't know who wants to take the lead on it, but.
I have questions before we start the actual, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, you're up.
Maybe just like, because I didn't get it, ask them ahead of time, my fault for being on. These are actually probably more for you, actually. On the fines, and then like in there it talks about civil penalties a little bit, is that when it's first, like when the first time they get a penalty, like the first time we find out there's a problem, or is it only if they've been notified, and then they don't fix it, then we would enforce the civil penalty? Or maybe somebody else can answer that.
We won't use criminal provision if they're, we're having reoccurring problems with the same property. The fines are greater when the civil provision, so that would be our first option, but if we're not getting compliance, criminal may be our only resort.
So it's only if it's not a problem that's fixed, like, so the first time it wouldn't be used as?
I do not think we've used criminal action for enforcement for a short number of years. Maybe one exception to that, when you've been at least 10 years plus.
Okay. And then with the fine schedule, maybe I'm missing, I may have just missed it, because there's been so much back and forth. Do we have a list near somewhere of like the minimum, maximum, or no? Like kind of fines for the various, do we have that, or no?
Over in court, it's up to the judge. I mean, we would say a first offense, you have $750, but it's up to the judge.
Right.
And if it helps, I, in my, my first job after law school, I, for the first five years, one of my clients was, well, the place, the firm I worked for clients, was the city of Carter Lake, and so it was my job as the new person to go prosecute tickets for this very sort of thing, as well as traffic. And in my experience, and I also got to see the city of Council Bluffs being enforced, they do them at the same time, on Monday or Tuesday mornings, on third floor. The fines, there's a maximum, but fines, I can't say that quite often the maximum is ever, in fact, I can't off the top of my head think of once that it ever was. Usually, it was much, much lower than that, sometimes I thought way too low personally as a prosecutor. But that is standard in the code, that is what we have in pretty much every other section of our, of our city municipal code already, and that parrots state law, so I, it's fairly standard, I just don't think people probably noticed it before, but that's standard law in Iowa.
You may recall the parking incident in the park where the ticket said they may be fined up $750 for, in this case, it was parked under a shade tree in the grass, and that made a lot of headlines across the country, but reality, that's rarely is the type of penalty that's handed down.
Okay, those were just questions I had, and I didn't know the answer, so I thought I'd ask you before we got into all the other more in-depth stuff.
So, and I just want to make sure I understand it, that was already in there, it's just that instead of referring you to another code, it's now written out in this version?
Yeah, any violation of a city ordinance is, can be prosecuted either as criminally or as a municipal sole infraction.
But that isn't a change that, that's just the way it has been?
I think just because it's more visible than it's placed, questions as far as, is there like a reason, you know, I think it's, yeah.
The goal is, in some ways, you know, you're darned if you do, darned if you don't, let me put it that way, the, there is a lot of reasonable concerns in this housing code that things should be clearer, and you shouldn't need a law degree to go find it. Well, when we put it someplace else, it makes it longer, so you have to pick one or the other. I mean, in this case, the suggestion is make it so that a person doesn't have to reference another code section that's been, that's been expressly incorporated by reference, which is a legalese term to do, and it's even harder to perform. So it does make it a little longer, but, I mean, it is easier to find, which I'm in favor of when we have laws.
For, for purposes of clarity, I think it's safe to say that we have two, two different amendments or versions that were, that Marcy set out and provided to both of us. I have been working on, on a set of amendments in advance of receiving your version around lunchtime today, and so I didn't have time to go back and fully incorporate all of your changes into mine, so there's a, there's a little bit of a disconnect between those two versions, but I wasn't able to take the document that you sent to me and make it into a working version.
Did you work with staff on this at all, just so I know, was this just yours, or did you work with staff on any of it?
No, this is based upon inputs that I received from, from citizens in the landlord community.
Yeah.
And it's fair to say both ways, just so we're clear, that neither you nor I had the benefit of the other, and for a lot of reasons, that's to do with avoiding any concerns whatsoever of the open meetings law.
Now, having, having said that, how I put this together is, is I'm attempting to address my amendments in consideration of what, what you have offered up.
Fair enough.
And in, in comparing the two, I think I only found one provision where I recommend deleting something that you had added.
They're quite similar in many respects, from what I've been able to read from it.
Al, can you zero in on the changes that you did make, just to make it easier for us, please?
Sure.
Are yours in blue, and Nate's are in green and red, I'm, we've got a lot of colors going on.
That absolutely, absolutely correct, and the colors have changed from what I originally submitted. Ordinarily, anything that's, that has, that's underlined is, is text that has been added, and the.
But added by you or added by Nate?
Added by me.
Added by you, and the italics are you?
And, yes, and that's some of my administrative explanation for why I'm making that, that proposed change.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's not part of the ordinance, that's your reasons why, the underlying section?
Yep, that's to, that's to help everybody kind of understand how I, how I came to that particular amendment.
And it's fair to say, on either his amendment or mine, the words in black are what passed to second reading tonight, and then the colors are something in his draft or changes he suggests, and in my draft are changes I suggest.
Right.
Right.
So the colors aren't effective right now in the one before us.
No, but his explanation on the italics is helpful, because that clarifies that it's part of the ordinance, or it's just an explanation.
Yeah, indeed, yeah.
Perfect. So the blue little top thing is just, you're kind of giving us background, it wouldn't be part of this.
Correct, and some of it, just because I didn't have time to go through and, and fix everything, some of it is just commentary without, without any recommended amendment.
Understood.
And, and the text that is in green, of course, refers to what you, you had added in, in your text in, in green. So I, so I did a lot of that, just to reflect that you had added something, but I didn't have time to go through and, and update all the language.
Okay.
I, I hope that's not overly confusing to folks.
No, because, no, it's actually helpful, because not only is it italicized, it's No, because, no, it's actually helpful, because not only is it italicized, it's got those little square box thingies.
Yep.
Not parentheses, but the other one. Half a box thingy.
Mine is probably.
So, Al, just to be clear, this in here is everything Nate has, but any changes you made? Correct or not?
Correct.
Okay. So was it true when you said there was some issue with getting the two? Okay.
So.
Yeah, here, here for example.
On page four, Al, in the middle of the page, and there are sequentially numbered twenty-five, and then in the middle of the page, there's a twenty-nine with a question mark, plum.
Yeah, as I, as I was following through the, the words, I noticed that some of the numbering appeared a little bit different.
It, it changes based on addition to.
It shows twenty-nine, is that what?
Yeah, it, it changes based on other things that I would suggest we add bumps things, where they appear alphabetically.
So, so some things have, have changed in sequence. And, and this isn't.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, is this available to anyone except for us up here? Has it been uploaded online? That's the question.
I have copies.
No, of his.
Oh, of his? No.
Uh, my version, yes, I put that, again, to avoid any, any concern or appearance of open meeting law violations. I, I've been working particularly with, with Sharon on this, and so I didn't want to be reasonably accused of violating the rule of working with more than one other person. So I posted it last night onto Facebook, both on my, my council page as well as my personal one, because then the whole public gets it. And I, quite a few, actually, the comments we've received in the last day, people have had the benefit in that respect, if nothing else, of, of my suggested changes, insurance as well. Because a lot of their comments addressed things that weren't in a previous version, but.
I have an idea. Oh, I have an idea. So those right there are ones that.
These are extra ones of what we've worked on. I haven't got anything other than the copy I was given.
I'm not sure if we can do this or not, because we just got this too. So obviously we haven't really read through all of Al's suggestions. What if we, I don't know if this is allowed, so say no, I don't know who should, what if we let everybody have a copy of that one, and then together we went over changes, because we haven't all got to see it yet either? Then they'll know what we're talking about, why we're.
That's why I brought them. I brought them for that reason, so that anybody in the audience could have a copy.
There you go. Can you pass those up?
I mean.
We have that, Sharon, correct?
It's this.
Yeah.
And then together we could just go over.
It's the one I emailed to you.
I don't know if that's ideal, but.
I think a lot of people got it emailed to them from different people, but this way you've got a hard copy and it's easier to kind of follow along.
And then we could just go through what's different on this one, maybe?
And I guess, I do want to just make it clear that there's been a lot out on Facebook, actually on the Nonpareil page. I got a call from Tim today. There's some obvious accusations out there that Nate and I, working together on this project, violated some kind of, of law, or that it was incorrect in doing that. That is not correct at all. We met Saturday morning with staff to try to work through a very extensive list of issues that the landlords had, trying to find those areas that we could make changes and make this work the best that it could work. So if you've read anything on Facebook, or you've gotten a forward from a council person making these accusations, I want everybody to know, we have every right to work together to try to come up with something that's, that's the best that it can be. And I, I'm just going to say this right now, I personally do not appreciate getting a call from a reporter, because a fellow councilman didn't pick up the phone and call me. It's, it's absolutely the most aggravating situation that I can imagine. I can tell you that I have not been called at any point to discuss any amendments that another council person has made. And I don't, why I'm expected to make that call to them, I do not know. But I, I just want everybody to know, no laws were violated, open meetings weren't violated. And I would hope that the newspaper makes sure that that's very clear when they run their story, that there was nothing, absolutely nothing wrong with what was done.
And if I may, the purpose of meeting with staff, and the two of us, again, not violating open meetings law, is, I'll speak for myself. Over the last three weeks, I've spent over a hundred hours meeting with landlords and tenants and neighborhoods and anyone else who's asked to meet with me, or that I knew about and I reached out to, and they agreed to meet with me. There were a significant number of similar suggested changes in the already existing law, because this changed, the original, the whole point of this was deciding who does the inspections. The standards of the inspections, the original proposal, were going to stay the same. But it seemed, there were quite a few concerns raised by many landlords, and they seemed quite fair, and I think they were fair, about if we were going to look at, all right, who's doing the inspections, let's look at some of the rules as written, not necessarily as how enforced, but as written. How are some of those beyond the minimum standards for health, safety and welfare, which is how we regulate housing, particularly rental housing, because it's a commercial entity? Yes, I agree. Which is why we wanted to, one of the perspectives we wanted to get was to understand from a staff perspective, first of all, if we change one section, a lot of them cross-reference to others, and I don't know that, because this is not my trade. So I needed to know the fa, answers to factual questions, not opinions, factual questions, so that I could, as part of my due diligence, determine what I believe my opinion to be as to things. And, and if I may, on a related point, there have been a lot of concerns addressed, mostly not directly to me, but indirectly, that now the proposed amendment has gotten very long. Well, to the extent it's gotten any longer, it's because I gave people what they wanted. And so to do exceptions, it will get longer because I have to name them. There were quite a few, quite frankly, that made complete sense to me, about how the windows need not be absolutely perfect, and if you have a living room with an old house that you're running out. I live in an old house. Do all eight windows in my, my front parlor open? I'm not sure they do. Should we require that? No. One opening enough? A lot of landlords said yes. I agree with them. So that's why, so a lot of these changes, actually all of these changes, other than a few typo corrections, which the, the fault of those are on me, are giving people what they want. So I, so I hope, so I hope people pick which criticism they want. Either it's too long, because I agreed with folks, or, you know, you, you got to pick. It's, or if you want the things, it's going to be longer. If you want it shorter, we can just not add those exceptions. But I don't think that's fair to landlords not to add them.
Well, and, and going back to the, the meeting and the open laws, just, just to further clarify, if three council members were involved in those conversations over the weekend, then that would be a violation. But two council members is a, a routine part of business. We have, we've had committees over my time on the council, where two council members get together and, and have discussions that are then brought forth to the study session. So there's, you know, I, I haven't heard or seen anything irregular about this process. As a matter of fact, this process is different from other ordinances in the amount of, of input outside city that, that I've seen. And I, and I think that's a good thing, and it, and it benefits all of us eventually in this, in this ordinance and in this matter, so.
Well, and I, I thank you, Nate, for, for making these changes based upon the amount of input that has been received. And it's been noted that a great deal of input has been received. And, and we, we had a, a meeting that, that some of us found out about after the fact, where changes were drafted. Those, those, those changes were provided to me over lunch hour today. It's the first time I, I had seen them. And, and I think that the concern is that, given, given the importance of this particular ordinance and the chapter rewrite, given the amount of input that has come in, and given the fact that some of the landlord, the tenant, realtor community have not had an opportunity to review all these lengthy changes to what is already a lengthy ordinance, that that poses a certain amount of discomfort.
Well, that's where the thing is, is that at the last meeting, you brought amendments that you provided to us five minutes before the study session, because that's the way it's done. We're bringing amendments tonight that will send this to another reading, which gives everybody a, a chance to see them. I emailed them out to landlords last night. I brought copies for them today. And again, what I'm sensing by the emails and phone calls that I'm getting, is there's some insinuation that by working as hard as we have to come up with these solutions, that, that we've done something wrong. And again, that's what I'm hearing you say is, I didn't hear about the meeting till after it happened. Of course you didn't. These, this was due diligence being done on our part. Why would we contact you about a meeting on amendments we're trying to draw up? You didn't contact me about the amendments that you brought today. You brought them to the meeting, but you didn't call me. So I guess I just, I keep hearing this being said like there was something done wrong. And I'm very frustrated with that attitude. We're going to keep changing this until we can get it the way it needs to be. And if that means it goes to six readings, seven readings, it'll go that far. We're not pushing anything through, so I don't understand what your issue was that required you to go out on Facebook, the Nonpareil page, to make it look like something untoward was done by two council people.
You know, and I've been working with this body for nineteen years now. Press comes and press says, God, your meetings run smoothly. We don't see that in other communities. And I proudly tell people, the members of this board come together and vote on what they think's good for the citizens of Council Bluffs. And we don't always agree. And when we don't agree, we go our separate ways and, and we're still friends. But we're here to do the business of Council Bluff, what's good for the business of the, of Council Bluff. Frankly, what I read in the Nonpareil today changed all that. It's grandstanding, it's embarrassing, it's a lack of professionalism. When a council member writes, all three, they are ready to pass it in order to find out what it, what is in it. All three council people are up for reelection next fall. They want to get this pushed through now, hoping that you will forget before election day. Let the council members know that you'll help your neighbors remember. They are making an effort to try and get council members not reelected. Rather than talk about the issues, present good ideas on the issues, make amendments, make changes, make the best law possible, it's all become a grandstanding. It's an embarrassment to the.
Well, and I firmly, and I firmly believe that everything.
It's an embarrassment to the city.
It is. I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I firmly believe, and I'm not going to speak for anyone else on this council, but when I'm reviewing materials before me, talking with people, talking with residents, talking with landlords, businesses in this issue, or in any issue, it's what's in the best interest of the city, not whether someone's going to vote for me or not. That is the farthest from my mind. I look upon city council as community service. I have made that very public in every time I speak, every time I run, before I even ran. This, to me, is community service. It's not politics. And I am, I'm really, really perturbed that political games and backstabbing and insinuation and just general insightful actions have taken place. And it's, it's unwarranted. We've never seen it before. And I really hope that it doesn't continue.
Okay, now, now that this is degenerated, I, I just want to get some clarification.
It has.
Yes, it has.
This, this, this quote that you read out of the Nonpareil, is there a suggestion that someone on this council wrote that?
Well, there is a suggestion on my part, since I heard you stand up at the Republican county can, um, party meeting the other night and say that the Council Bluff City Hall is trying to take away your property rights, and this opens up with warning, Council Bluff City Hall is changing your property rights.
You, you attended a different meeting than I did, because I, I did not use those words. I said that it impacts people's property rights, and it surely does. There's a group of, there's a group of individuals out here who have made a considerable investment of their income and their, their sweat, and they've, they've made continuing investments.
Well, if I, if I may, from a legal point of view, and I, I think both of us know better on that score, there is nothing about the current law in this city on the housing code, or nothing even approaching in our amendments, that again, are amendments that people want. There is nothing in them that i, in any way even approaches a constitutional violation. Either you're under the federal, Fourth Amendment is incorporated against states in the Fourteenth, forgive me for a moment, because I can talk to him like, because he should know this. Whether it's, whether it's incorporated into state law through that, or through the case law, or the Fourteenth Amendment, or whether it's the Iowa constitution itself, or the statutes, there is absolutely nothing about this statute. I am ashamed that some people, not many, but some are going around and scaring tenants. I'm getting a lot of emails from people who are saying, we're going to come in, like jackbooted thugs, and knock down doors and arrest people to, to look at their rentals. No, we're not. The landlords are supposed to have been doing this already. It's just going to be a different party doing it. I don't know how that rises to a constitutional violation, when you very well know that the court cases that stretch back decades about administrative warrants and the constitutionality of these, these, now, you may disagree with them as a matter of policy, but that doesn't rise to constitutionality. Something can be constitutional, but stupid. I'll grant you that. There are plenty of that, and we probably agree on many of those. But, but it's not unconstitutional. And, and to be accused of that and to have tenants, I had a couple call me in tears. That's what they sounded like, being scared by people. That's not right.
Well, I'm interpreting that, that you're directing this at me. When have you heard me or anyone else in this council suggest that this constituted a violation of constitutional rights somehow?
Well, it's either that or someone's committing libel in your name by calling themselves Colonel Al and, and, and making comments on your Facebook page or on the Nonpareil page. So it is possible, I, I can grant you that someone has taken your password and appropriated your identity, but I doubt it.
Because I, I did not make those comments.
Well, they were all in all caps, sir, and, you know, I don't mind disagreeing on the issues. I think more often than not, we happen to agree on the issues. But, but to take it to this level of scaring people, when you know better, because constitutionally, there's no problem here. You know better.
No, I, discussion of property rights does not allege that there's a constitutional violation.
You know better, sir. Yes, it does.
No, I, I'm sorry. I disagree.
All right, well, let's get back to.
Yes, yes, please.
Yeah, we could be on it for hours.
Yeah, because, and, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer. There's three of you up here, so I'm outnumbered. Sharon and I are outnumbered. So for me, just as a regular person looking at this, I, I've lost track of the number of people who've called me and emailed me thinking that we are rewriting the entire ordinance. Everything is changing, and that is not true. The bones of the ordinance have always been on the books. And if your landlord has been following the ordinance, then there is no need to panic. It's simply a matter of, instead of the landlord doing the inspection, professionals are going to be doing the inspection, which should be better, because they know what they're doing, they know what they look, they, to look for. It's their job, that's their focus. And I think it will ultimately end up with a better rental product or housing product. My house, your house, it doesn't matter. But the point is, is to make the house a suitable place to live. And if the landlords have been doing their jobs in running their business properly and according to the law, then there is no need to fear, because you're already living in a suitable environment.
If I may piggyback on that, it has been the city code that the current substantive rules, that is, what are, when you go in there currently under the self-expection, what you, what you're required to look at and check off, whether you yourself are complying with it or not. Under the original proposal presented to this council, didn't change whatsoever. So the rules that have been in place since nineteen eighty. Fair enough, there were a lot of concerns that, all right, if someone else is doing the inspection, gosh, maybe some of these are over the top. Yes, I agree, many of them. That's why we address it. And so to be criticized on one hand, that, you know, if you go through here, for example, I'll tell you the, 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 the main things that changed. And I'll tell you what's currently written and how I'm making it better for landlords, because you asked. It makes it longer, but that's the only way I can do it in an ordinance. All right? Well, for any, any home, if, if your home was substantially rehabilitated, you remodeled it, or you converted it to apartments, when there weren't codes, the current law says you've got to meet the two thousand nine codes, even if it were converted in the forties, or, excuse me, we had codes as of nineteen twenty-eight. So let's say you converted the house in nineteen twenty-five. Well, the current law technically says you need to meet the two thousand nine code. I say that's silly. I change that in the benefit of every homeowner. Of course, helps landlords.
Can you let us know what page and section you're looking at?
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, because everybody in the audience.
In mine, page one, it's, it's section five. How those are read is seventeen's the title, one's the chapter, and zero, zero, five is the section, if I, if I suddenly start saying those words.
Seventeen, seventeen point zero, one point zero, zero, five.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Now, on page two, I just changed the word basement, the fire marshal. marshal thought it should be clear. It should jive with what we define it in other codes. Didn't really make a difference to me.
Just like slow down a tiny little bit.
Sure.
But like, as soon as we find out, like, oh, wait, okay.
No, I'm sorry.
As soon as like two seconds to find it.
I'm trying to find that perfect medium between going too fast and too slow.
You're good. I know what you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm fast at it, too, so I would be the same.
Yeah, I just...
I apologize. No, 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 I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Keep it rolling. Just give us a section and the number, please.
Okay, sure. Section seventeen oh one, seventeen point oh one point oh one oh on page two, subpart two. Basement, I changed the definition because the fire marshal wants it to match what we say in other codes. To me, as a layman, because I'm not a fireman, means the same thing, but if it's consistent and it reads better, well, I don't see the harm either way, really. So you go to page four, and you'll look at subsection plum. The most concerns I got from landlords, and I agree 100% with them, which is why I suggest this change that they wanted, was right now, the code as written says, since 1980, says that if you're passing your inspection and you're certifying on that form that you're following the law, your wall in your basement has to be perfectly plumb. Plum meaning perfectly up and down. I'm not sure many new houses that meet that. I can tell you mine, that's 125. Surely doesn't. But is it gonna collapse tomorrow? No, I hope not. So I changed the definition of plum to a mathematical formula. Again, I needed the facts for that. Basically, that is so far, one-third out of whack, that it's no longer, the vertical loads are no longer holding the wall. So in other words, that wall is so crooked that it's likely gonna fall down soon. Yeah, you should replace the foundation if you're gonna make money off of renting it to folks. But if it's holding up and it's just a little crooked, our current law says you have to replace the whole foundation. That's silly. I agree with the landlords. That's a change in your favor.
Nate?
Yes, sir.
If I may, just add some perspective. I received some comments or some concerns along technical lines from landlords.
Please.
And just, it got so technical that I couldn't follow it anymore.
Understood.
And so this is one area, perhaps of many, where they have some valid inputs into this that they would like to make into the process. And they wanted to have some opportunity, at least to discuss it, so that they could work through those technical aspects.
I have talked to many landlords. In fact, there were hardly any who I met with in person. Actually, I can't think of any off the top of my head that I met with in person, and very few didn't that I just conversed with in writing or on the phone, who didn't say that our current, the way it's written, and I wanna be clear, that's not the way we're enforcing it. And I like laws to be written as we're enforcing it. I don't wanna do wink and nod. If folks wanna keep doing that, I can't support that. The way it's currently written, plum means perfectly straight. So a lot of people are rightly concerned, gosh, there's no house, maybe even new ones, probably. And there's nothing perfect in this world. There were the walls perfectly plumb. But is it gonna fall over? If it's not, should we make you replace the whole foundation? No, that's silly.
Where did you come up with the one-third of the base? Did that come from...
That was a question from, so in the trade, because I'm only an amateur at these sorts of things, this is not my profession.
It came from the 1996 Dangerous Building Code Book, ninety-seven. So because that's already on the books, then it doesn't require us to then adopt anything else. It's just we can take that definition from that code that is already accepted and used by the city. And so it takes away all of that. You know, the HQS, that was one of my concerns about that, because it's like crumbling brick, recent settlement. Well, all that's very, very subjective. This isn't subjective at all. While I will say that I think some people may have a concern about it being technical, one of the things that we have put in here is that Steve then will do those classes. And so for anyone that would need that information, you know, if it doesn't make sense, he can provide that. But with this, it's pretty clear. It's not gonna be a subjective, "Well, I say your brick's crumbling," or "I say that was recent." You know, this is really pretty definitive, and I think it makes it so much better.
And, you know, the word plum here, it's similar to a case that the lawyers will probably know. Potter Stewart is Justice on the U.S. Supreme Court, and went in a case about pornography. He was asked to define it, and he says, "I know it when I see it. It's the best definition." Plum in the real world, we have to put a legal definition there. We can't just say it's whatever Steve Carmichael, whatever Nate Watson thinks it is. I mean, we can't do that, no matter how much you may think or not of either of us. But in the real world, that means, just like pornography, presumably, you know when you see it. Plum, if you look at that wall and it's gonna fall over, probably we're gonna make you replace it. If it's been holding and it doesn't, then you're not. Currently, the law, again, what people are swearing under penalty of perjury since 1980 is that their walls are perfectly straight. I'm not suggesting the vast majority of people are lying, not in the least. I'm saying it's confusing and it's a silly standard. It's a nice, it is a reasonable objection as part of this process. To be fair, I'm giving people what they want when it makes sense. And that totally makes sense.
Can I ask a question, and not to jump ahead, but Sharon, you just mentioned something about classes, landlord classes?
Yeah.
Well, maybe I should direct this to you, Steve. It's not just landlords that this ordinance covers. It's homeowners. So will those classes be open, not only to the landlords who do this as a business, but for any resident who may be concerned about whether their house is up to code, or maybe they're...
We will make that available to anybody that wants to...
It's the way it's written, however.
Okay.
Right, except that because this is gonna be a city inspection program where these properties are being inspected. You know, I don't have a problem with it being open to the public. I think that's great. But I think the reason it was written in here this way is that the landlords need to be able to understand and prepare their properties for these inspections. So that's really going to be, you know, what I would have assumed to been the direction of the classes. You know, what items do you need to, you know, be prepared with your properties, and how would you do that, and what does this mean for you?
But the inspections are also happening on owner occupied, so if...
Indeed. It does apply to both, technically, the way it's drafted.
Not that they're gonna come out of the woodworks and, you know, wanna take the class, but of course, the class would be space available. I just wanted to make sure they weren't being ignored.
They want them ignored.
Okay, thank you.
That's the way it's drafted. It's intended primarily, but because a lot of folks said, "Look, I wanna know what it means in the real world." And I agree, that makes complete sense. It seems entirely fair. So not only that, the training program, voluntary, didn't make it mandatory. There is a requirement that all sorts of helpful literature, like what's currently called a hierarchy chart, basically ranked in somewhat of an order. It's not a promise, this is an order. But basically, what's the most important thing? And, you know, foundation's pretty high up there, of course. It's logical. But it's giving landlords more understanding in writing, so it's enforceable and agreeable by everybody, so it's not up to the subjective whims of any one person into the future, whoever that may be. So we all know what it means. That's a heck of a lot better than the way it's written now.
And that's what you were doing in number thirty-six.
Thirty-six is the story above grade.
Oh, sorry, that's the one she's...
Page ten, number H.
Well, let's not flip around the whole lot.
Yeah, let's just go with thirty-six.
All right. Thirty-six on that same page, number four. Again, that ties into changing the definition of basement. The fire marshal says, "Story above grade means this." Again, as a layman, they look the same to me, but if it makes it consistent, and I don't see how it makes a difference harmful towards anybody's interests, let's make the change. All right. Page five, we talked seventeen point oh one point oh four oh. The punishments for the violation. Again, I just put it in the statute rather than refer you to chapter two, which has the default for every violation in our city, other than ones we specifically define in a chapter titled differently. That's the default. I thought, you know, that's hard to know where to look. So let's just make it straightforward, because people are gonna be looking at the housing code, or primarily gonna be people that are landlords and have a commercial interest. I wanna make it easier to understand. So I just set it out there. I think that's helpful. Otherwise, you have what's called a trap for the unwary. You won't be able to find it unless you hire...
And it's not anything new. It's just putting it out there to see it.
Yep, yep. Now, if you go to page six, seventeen point oh two point six eight, this was another big concern that Sharon and I were trying to address with landlords. A lot of people raised the idea that under our current code, technically, the way it's written, which is how it can be enforced, so I'd be afraid if I were landlord, the way it's currently written, if there's a hairline crack in your window, and I have to say, I probably have one or two in my 125-year-old house, but it's not letting the weather in, it's not affecting the structural integrity, it's probably gonna be forever. It may have even been decades when it started to get that crack. Well, the way this is written now, that's all right. The way it's currently written, you've gotta replace all those, the glazing, or what I'd call the panes. It also says, under the current code, which, again, since 1980, you've got eight windows in the front living room, or parlor, depending on the age of the house. All of them must function. Every single window in a large number of rooms, different types of purpose rooms, must have windows that open. This just requires that every bedroom's gotta have one window that opens, and that's for two reasons, ventilation. But secondly, to get in if you're a fireman, or to get out if you're escaping the fire. So all the other windows in the house just can't let rain or other elements in. That is a heck of a lot better than the way it's currently written. That is something a lot of people raised, and I agree. I believe Sharon agrees. I hate to speak for her, but I agree.
Oh, yeah. That was one we wanted to absolutely address.
We are subjecting with these changes, we're subjecting it to a certain amount of subjective...
No.
No.
...decision, because you say reasonably tight seal, and then down below, normal wear and tear accepted. So the inspector is going to be determining what is normal wear and tear, and what is a reasonable seal.
That is a very good question. Thank you. There's a difference in the law between something that's really vague, to put it in regular English, and something that's just the standard law. You can't write a law that will cover all situations ever, because you just can't do it. It'd be too long, and it would never cover everything. So to a certain degree, do we, like any city law, do we have to rely on human beings enforcing it commonsensically? Yes. And what's the check on that if they don't? Courts. I can't make that any better in this imperfect world in which we live. That's a very good question. But it leads me to a related point, that the reason why we ultimately decided, Sharon and I believe, correct me if I ever say this incorrectly...
No, we've worked together on this.
...decided to work off of the current code we've had since 1980 and make that better, is it is far more objective than the HUD standards. I looked into the HUD standards and into the Congressional Committee reports, going back to right when Housing and Urban Development was created as an executive department, and Section Eight program was created in particular. And it matched what I thought was a commonsensical real-world observation, which doesn't always happen. Section Eight was created to help folks who are in a condition in their lives, usually because of circumstances out of their control, bad luck, bad breaks, bad things, work accident, bad divorce. They're in a situation where they need help with an overall scheme in their life. In other words, the HUD standards talk about going in there and making sure they know how to use the all-four burners, that they work, that the refrigerator, they know the seal's important. Do we really want to put into our health and safety minimum code for housing in the city that if a schoolteacher has just gotten out of college and starting her job in town, is renting, that I've gotta go in there and assume that I've gotta tell her how to use a refrigerator or use a stove? Do we want to... The purpose of HUD is so different. It's to help people in a lot of things in their overall life. And please, I'm trying to be, choose my words very carefully, because I'm not making fun of folks who are in that situation. I'm really not. I'm just saying it's to help them. The idea that government should be here to help every renter, if I were them, I'd be insulted, if you think about it. And that's far more government. And it talks about, you know, will the building be in a suitable condition? Well, if the tenant doesn't think it is, you've got a violation. It's subjective on what the tenant wants it to be. I don't think that makes any sense. From a landlord perspective, do you wanna leave it up to tenants to decide whether they think you did good enough? Or do you want an objective standard that says none of them can let in the rain or the wind, and at least one's gotta open?
The reason of the tight seal was the intent there, and we took that partially from the HQS. We looked through there. We looked at what their definition was.
Thank you.
We looked at several different definitions, and that's the one that seemed most reasonable, because a crack isn't gonna let the weather in. You're still gonna have a good seal. But if there's a pane missing, or there's a giant hole with, you know, broken glass, you're gonna get, you know, it's not gonna be a reasonably tight seal, because the wind's still gonna come in. So it was an attempt to make it a reasonable, safe, and health issue, rather than, you know, cosmetic in many ways.
Over the top, yeah.
But that particular one, we didn't add the normal wear and tear to. That did get added under interior surfaces, and there's good reasons for that when we get there. But so that's the window ones. And then on the interior surfaces, you know, here's the deal. If your tenant slings their bedroom door open and it pops a hole in the drywall, that's not a health and safety issue. It's really more cosmetic. Now, if you've got a giant crack that runs from the ceiling to the floor in a plastered wall like mine, the inspector's probably gonna try and determine why. You know, is it because there's a load that's not being supported correctly or whatever? But if it's just normal wear and tear, the dog scraped up the paint on the woodwork, you know, that's not gonna be a health and safety issue. So that's why we did the normal wear and tear there is accepted, and tried to make that one a little bit easier to abide by.
And the way it's written today, you don't get that. I mean, if there's a nick, technically, if I scuff the wall up going up the stairs, you need to repaint it the way it's written. I'm not suggesting that's how we're enforcing it. Don't get me wrong. But again, I want the law to be, to say what it means, because I think that's the only fair way to know what you have to do.
And the overriding concern I heard from people is, we trust Steve Carmichael.
Absolutely.
But Steve Carmichael's not gonna be there forever, and so make something that takes the guesswork out of them.
So then on the past...
Yeah.
The past, we ended up going back to the original IPMC verbiage, so that, because that was a concern, and I agree, that if I rent you a house and it didn't have bugs when you rented it, why am I responsible to get rid of the bedbugs once you bring them in? You're the one that picked up the sofa off the curb, you know? So that changed the...
Current code makes you responsible, sir.
Right. Yeah, current code, you have to do that. So now, with this, now if it's multifamily, it goes back to the original International Property Maintenance Code, that it would be both of you would be responsible, because in multifamily, if you bomb for roaches here, they're just gonna move there. So but as far as it goes, we took out what's in the code right now and replaced it with the original verbiage from the international code.
Yeah, if you rent out a single-family home and it didn't have bugs when you rented it, and they get it during it, now the tenant's responsible. There was a lot of talk, and I completely agree with it. Well, why the heck is the landlord responsible for that? What's the responsibility of the tenant there, and what about the rights of the landlord there? Completely agree, that's why it's been changed to your benefit. Currently, you don't get that.
If I may...
Please.
Appreciate those changes. And another concern on that section was kind of the over-inclusive, all or any, yeah, the any comment. Along that same vein, because folks thought that any provided a bit of an overreach in that regard, a similar change was made with regard to Section 308 dealing with rubbish and garbage, because as that code section reads, any amount of rubbish or garbage constitutes a violation. So my amendment on that section just tried to change that. I think I used the word, something to the effect of excessive accumulation.
Should there be any rubbish, though? I mean, on health, for the health codes, should there be any rubbish or garbage in the yard?
You'd have to look to the definition of rubbish to see if it's...
Because that was where we were trying to be really careful, because we do realize that there's some crossover, you know, with different codes, like with the fire department and the health department. So that wasn't one...
Do we have a current copy of the 2000? Because partly, my concern is I need to see rubbish as it's specifically defined in the model code, because I don't believe we override it. It may already be reasonable, you know what I mean? Just like I define the word plum to mean something it isn't technically, to make it easier. It may already do that, and I don't know.
Steve hasn't.
Yeah, there was...
It is defined.
Yeah, it is defined.
Any combustible or non-combustible waste material except garbage.
Could you say that again? I'm sorry.
Any combustible or non-combustible waste material except garbage.
And your concern is the word any?
Correct, yeah. Because as that reads, you go into any college-age person's apartment, look in their refrigerator, and you're gonna find all kinds of violations. And I don't think that's quite what we're going for in this.
What we have done with those sections with tenant responsibilities, kind of shifted that, go back to tenant, under tenant's duty to keep the premises free from nuisance. I think you've got enough rubbish or garbage hanging around, causing nuisance, that's when you're really gonna start acting. That's what the city will have to take of this.
So Dick, is it your...
I just wanted to give some latitude to the inspector, if you will, just as we're trying to do in the subsequent section. Just trying to be consistent.
Steve, do you have any preference on the word any or all?
There's no difference between any and...
And that...
That's the health department.
Oh.
Right. And that's why we...
Terms aren't gone.
Again, yeah, we would need...
In that particular case, I don't think it means, taking out any doesn't do anything.
Right.
In the insects, it does.
Well, and what he's saying is, he's changing it in his... Well, and what he's saying is, he's changing it in, in his amended amendment to all exterior property and premises, and the interior of every structure shall be free from the excessive accumulation of rush, rubbish or garbage. And again, then.
Then that raises it up subjective.
You know, because I can tell you everybody's comfort level with cleanliness. I mean, I go in people's houses, and they don't think that's excessive. Personally, I can't hardly breathe, because it's so bad, but.
You may wanna mention your appraiser, you're not breaking in.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm not breaking in. I'm, I'm appraising their homes, and, and what I have found, and there's nothing wrong with that, it's just that we all have a different level of comfort with what's around us and, and what we collect. And so, if you have newspapers stacked up, and they're only to the bottom of the windowsill, instead of to the top of the window, where did the, where is the excessive part? You know, that's what I worry about.
Double with the inspector. The inspector may.
That's what I'm saying, because I know I could get another appraiser, and they wouldn't think that it was excessive to have the bundles of newspapers lining the wall up to the windowsill. But to me, it is kind of a hazard, you know, one spark and you're gonna go, probably. So that's all I would say about that. I mean, as far as the, the just, I'm trying so hard to not have things that are subjective. And you can't always do that, I know.
Well, Nate makes some good points about making sure that we're definite and accurate in, in what we're saying. Because that, that does provide a basis for, for enforcement. And, and I just wanna make sure that we're not opening up to a standard like we did in the insect case, where, where, where you suggest that one fly is a violation.
Could you read the definition? Maybe we can take care of it in the, we're just talking out loud. In the, could you read the rubbish definition again?
Can you come up here?
Sorry. Yeah, oh yeah, so folks can hear it.
It's number 34 in your, on page four.
Oh, good. Oh, I didn't know, okay.
Rubbish means any combustible or non-combustible waste material except garbage.
Okay, so give me an example of that as an inspector, if it accepts garbage. Give me an example of what that rubbish would be. I mean, are we talking?
For example, you decided to tear your roof off your house, and you just left all the shingles laying willy-nilly around the yard. That would be non-combustible trash or rubbish.
Are my clothes or tennis shoes lying around waste material?
I would say, depending on the quantity. I mean, if you're moving, if you're moving out of the house, and you leave a couple bags stacked on the side of the house, I don't think I'm gonna have my inspectors do anything about it. But if, if you've got tons of stuff out there, or even an accumulation, thank, thank the Lord, I don't have to enforce that for.
So, so as I was rushing to, to put together these, these revisions today, I, I was, I was thinking to myself, you know, do, how do I wanna phrase this? And I initially thought in terms, phrasing it in terms of presenting a, a danger to, to health and safety. Would that be something more that, of what you're going after anyway?
You know, a lot, a lot of.
Tell you, there's calls, and there, there are people calling, saying, my neighbor's got a bunch of trash in the yard, and it's bringing down my property value.
It's one, it's one bag. I, if, when I was out in the field doing this 30 years ago, if I walked up and, and there was debris and garbage, that from a common sense point, I thought was probably a violation of how the law was written, and I saw rats running underneath the house, you're darn right, I'm gonna write him up for it.
Yeah, that's a safety.
If, if it's just laying out there, and the guy's coming out, and he's had a bad day, and his wife left him, I'm gonna ask him to clean it up and be done with it. I mean, you know, you have to, you have to, you have some reasonals in what you're doing, and, I'm sorry.
You mean she threw all of his clothes out on the front lawn?
He was pretty much homeless. My, my, my point is, there's gotta be some, some qualified subjectiveness that you use when you look at that kinda stuff.
Yeah. And, and I thought we'd achieve that with respect to the infestation, and I just wanted to kind of do that in the same regard here, so.
Bugs, bugs are, they're a whole different animal.
So to speak, yeah.
Because rubbish means any combustible or non-combustible waste material.
Well, that's why I asked him about tennis shoes, yeah.
So waste material, I can't imagine would be your personal possessions, right? Your clothes, or?
That, that was my question. I, I wanted, I wanted to see if I could find a way out of that even being rubbish.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the, the answer to it is. Because I guess I'm personally comfortable with the, I don't think you should have any waste material piled up in your yard. I just don't. I just don't. I don't know where you, where do you draw the line? Unless you got any thing that would be a happy medium?
I think this is the hard, but if Dick is saying, because to me, the concern would be, again, that this is, the landlords are not, I'm assuming normally, they're not giving or renting these houses with waste material. So if you're saying there's an alternative, so it's not gonna be on them, because it's, it's not gonna be their fault. I mean, if there's waste material in these yards, I would assume it's not coming from the landlords. It's coming from their tenants, who they've probably told umpteen times, please remove this stuff. You show back up, and a week later, there's more waste. I mean, that's my concern with it. But if you're saying then there's a secondary.
It's not always the case, and I got one right now, I'm working that the landlord has a dumpster there that he's working on several of his rental properties, and he leaves them there for a long.
The dumpsters?
Stack stuff around it, and the neighbors call.
If it's an actual dump.
Gets it dumped, and then he, but he doesn't dump it unless we call.
Well, and so far, a lot of this is concerned exterior condition. 308 also concerns the, the interior of the structure. So there are a lot of people, they're just pack rats, or, or their definition of heirloom might be someone else's definition of, of.
Man's treasure.
Yeah, that's right.
So that would be more the, yeah, the concern, how do we, I mean.
Well, if, if we put, my concern about excessive is, my concern about it, I can see the benefit, I can see both sides of this, actually. My concern about it is, in the main, I wanna create a law that ever there appeals about it, it's about whether the facts were applied to the law correctly than this, rather than fighting also about what does the law mean, you know? So my concern is, if you add excessive, I get, I take your point, actually, that any literally read can mean one one thousandth of one percent. But if we put excessive in there, and the staff starts saying, I'm gonna put numbers on it, which in the real world, I don't know how you do this, but if it's over like 21% in my mind, bad, if landlords start appealing about that, they really need to, they can't have their cake and eat it too. They, you know what I mean? If we put exceptions in there like that, they can't sue about it.
So I, I'm, I'm happy to.
I'm not giving them something to sue about. Significant's better than excessive.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Are you making the change to the, to the definition of rubbish, or?
No.
Uh, that, that would make it more consistent, because otherwise rubbish in other contexts would mean something different. I don't know why it should. Shouldn't rubbish, rubbish mean the same thing?
So you would just change it back in the definitions?
So, so we're changing the definition of rubbish?
That'd be my suggestion.
Uh, no. I don't think so.
Not on this one.
Okay.
Okay.
Because we're, we're talking about the application of, of Section 308.1.
Okay.
But again, since it's going to be the tenant, not the landlord, I'm just curious as to whether or not there's really even an issue. Because then.
But we still have to enforce either the landlord or the tenant, so the tenant still has to.
Still need in here, because the tenant could have, like we said, we don't know, a certain amount of rubbish to some people, it's gonna seem, I mean, so I think you'd have to have it be that it's.
I'm really, I'm going, willing.
I don't know, some of this is so hard to read.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's more subjective than if you put the word significant, it's still, it, it goes back to the inspector to determine what they determine to be significant.
Well, that wasn't one, the rubbish one had not come up in any of my visits with any of the landlords I've met with, and I've met with really quite a few. So this was new to me, and it wasn't addressed by Nate or I in our amendments, because this is honestly the first. So, you know, I'll be open to amendments, but maybe something a little less subj, subjective than excessive, I guess.
Significant is better.
Significant.
I'm, I'm good with significant.
Since we will be presenting these tonight, Nate and I could put significant, then.
Where are we, sorry?
And what page, what page are you on now?
Keep it in yours, or?
Well, with, with regard to extermination, I'll just have to set it out here. Section is adopted as follows. Oh, excuse me. Oh, yeah, it's adopted as follows, and I'm gonna have to set it out, because I'm gonna have to say how it's different.
I was the first one, I gave up.
You know, I, I, I'm fine with the word significant, with the understanding here, I guess creating a legislative history, that I think it clarifies potential ambiguity, but doesn't affect a substantive change in the law. In other words, I'm not intending to create a subsection that allows a clever loophole to try to attack this law if you don't like it. Because if, if you're given the benefit of a provision, and then you sue about it, it's, it's quite shameful. You can't have your cake and eat it too. So I, I don't think it actually changed the law. I think, because I don't think right now, we're actually saying literally any. Now, I, I don't know of anyone who's said that to me, that, you know, any, I've got a tennis shoe on the floor, I suppose that could be rubbish, but I've, I've heard no one say that. So I, I suggest it as a clarifier, as opposed to a substantive change. Is, is that agreeable?
Yes, for me.
So in that, you mean just swapping out the word excessive for significant?
Yes, but I think the word significant is, is clarifying exist, it's, it's confirming existing practice. We're not.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Accumulate up to a significant level, potentially.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Got it.
Okay.
All right, so then we're moving on to, we ready to move on to seven? Page seven?
Yes.
We, that was another one that we had, every discussion I had with landlords had big consideration. They were worried about Section 402, and that was light. And in our meeting with Steve, we discussed this. It was, it's, some of it absolutely is silly. If you had a 10 by 10 room, under the current code, you would have to have like eight square feet of window or something, it was insane. So the fix for that, that Nate and I thought was reasonable, was to take out the entire Section 402 and repeal that, and not include that.
And again, currently, that's what you're supposed to have. You've got one room with one window, it should have eight, it should have eight square feet.
Yeah. So that, that's actually the code now, that's supposed to be being followed. But what we're saying is, is that we agree that that is excessive, and since homes now have electricity, you know, do you really need that much light to see in a room? Because you're gonna have lights, and when, you know, lamps. So that's being removed.
But what about the, but it talks about light bulbs, interior lighting, not just windows. You guys deleted all that, too?
Yeah, we deleted all of that, because every common hall and stairway in residential occupancies, other than in one and two family dwellings, shall be lighted at all times with at least a 60-watt standard incandescent light bulb for each 200 square feet of floor area, or the illumination provided by that spacing between lights shall not be greater than 30 feet. It seemed excessive to.
That's way above minimum standards.
Yeah, way above minimum standards.
I'm not even sure I know what that means.
Okay, I'm with you.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something in, in the editing, as, as we're going back and forth, because included in, in this draft, we, we have, we have the text of 402 included and crossed out. I didn't see the text of 402 in the prior drafts.
It's not. It's because if we're repealing it, we need to address that we repealed it. And so if you don't put it in there, you know, everything else is cited to the code, and it says we follow the code, but we're in the areas that we're not gonna follow the code, or we're repealing and not using that part, then we need to set it out. And that's what caused it to become longer.
17.02.010 is the Enabling Act. We say we're, we're adopting International Property Maintenance Code 2009. And then everything else in that 17.02, as follows, says, except for.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand. And it says Section 402 is repealed, got that, we're no longer applying that.
Oh, and I added it there, even though it wasn't there before, just so people could see, because if I didn't put it there, you couldn't see what I took out. So I put that in there for a reading aid.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could've just put.
It wasn't there, yeah, that's, that's the only time I did that, because it was something that we had.
So I wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
Nope, you're, you're quite right about that.
All right. Then, occupiable workspaces, that was one that we heard a lot about, and honestly, it made it sound like it was a factory or something. So those exceptions, one and two, processing, storage. Oh, page eight, 17.02.100. All we did there was take those exceptions out, one and two, that talk about processing, storage and operation areas. And then the part about areas in which persons are primarily engaged in vigorous physical activities. Had no problem taking that out, seemed a little odd. I was gonna say, vigorous is walking up my stairs some days, so.
And that bottom, that change at the bottom of page eight, if you got the one off Facebook last night, or from someone else, from somewhere I posted it, this is the only change, and is to correct the fact at the bottom of that page, instead of substantially out of compliance, where it substantially disappears. Why? Because there was a lot of concern among a lot of folks, particularly many landlords, who said, why do you have four tiers of standards, whether you've met the code or not? What's the difference between substantially out of compliance and out of compliance? And you know what, looking back at it, we agreed they were right. So just call it out of compliance, why make it more confusing? So I've, I missed correcting one of the, so it's, it's a typo, or just a miss on my part, so that just makes it consistent.
How come that definition isn't with the rest of the definitions?
Because that, that, it's so important to say, because when you're in compliance, you get your certificate. If you're substantially in compliance, that means you're pretty close. You're gonna get it, but you're gonna get a list of things you need to fix, and a time in which to fix them. But you're gonna still be able to rent it. If you're out of compliance, it's, it's so important to define that one specially, because that's when you don't get to have the tenants in there. So if we're gonna, that's the really, that's a major, you know, a major change, a major penalty, that's affecting your bottom line. So we've made it very clear when that occurs. So that, that's just to make it easier for folks to read it, and so it's not a trap for the unaware.
Okay.
Justin, I know you've got places to go and things to do. Did you have something?
I'll be here for the night. I just, just one thing that we just, the section we just went over with the lighting.
The 402.
I have a little bit of concern with deleting 402.2. That could come into, that somewhat has to do with egress lighting in multifamily buildings, and I think it's gotta stay.
Okay.
That'd be my recommendation. I don't think we wanna.
Is there a way to write it clear, and to take account of the current century? Because nobody can buy those bulbs anymore. Or you can't much longer.
Or comparable. I mean, my concern is that we're taking away emergency lighting out of egress paths.
But I don't, but I don't know what that means. Maybe we could talk about this afterwards?
Yeah, I think maybe we leave it in for this deal, and we'll sit down and work out the exact language. But if you put an amendment through that doesn't have it, then we gotta come back and re- amend.
Okay.
Maybe leave it for tonight, and.
Okay.
So you're okay with the rest of it, but just not 14, or 402.2, leave that in for tonight, until we can get some better wording, and then.
I'll leave it in for purposes of tonight, but you'll have to convince me that, that we should do that.
Well, I can probably convince you now. If you looked at structures on South 8 Street, some of the large mansions, they have common hallways. This is basically saying, the code says anybody outside of one and two family dwellings shall be lighted at all times with at least 60-watt standard. That means that their hallways and egress paths have to be lit. That's important, in the middle of the night, for my guys to get to them.
Yeah, can we, yeah, can we make, yeah, the multifamily, because it doesn't say that.
It, it says every common.
Other than one and two family dwellings?
Oh.
So that's the same thing?
I see.
Yeah, I'm saying multifamily, it's identifying it on the other side, and saying one and two family are exempt, but multifamily, you'd still have to follow these rules. A little bit of, I mean, we can work out the language, I just didn't want you to dump it too early.
I'm willing to keep it in for now, but let's discuss it further.
Should've had you come and have coffee and donuts with us Saturday morning. We were gonna take that one.
Oh, good, good. Okay.
Second.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Or I guess after the come.
Okay.
Coming back to page eight, there is 17.02.100, occupiable workspaces. I, I had a lot of curiosity addressed about what's that mean, and why is it in a, in a housing code?
Oh, indoor occupiable workspaces?
Yeah.
Steve?
Do we need that in there?
17.02.100, occupiable workspaces.
But after sitting back contemplating that today, if you have a residential structure that has a detached garage behind it, the detached garage is a completely different occupancy, it's a U occupancy instead of an R, that defines if you have areas in that building that are workable or used for work areas. A storage shed, or something along those lines. It's attached to the dwelling, it's a part of the dwelling.
So what I'm hearing you saying is, this is unnecessary duplication?
Well, and the other context you have to take too, Nate, is, remember, this applies to all buildings in the city.
Yeah.
Yeah. But wouldn't that be the case, if I, if I understood you correctly, whether you've got a home, a workspace in your home or not, you're gonna have to, if it's a home, you've gotta keep it at 68.
If you are inside the dwelling, all habitable spaces have to be maintained at 68 degrees, minimum.
Then, then I would agree that this is unnecessary duplication, and we could just take it out.
Yeah, because it would still exist in the, in the building code, just not part of the rental inspection process. That's correct.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So that was incorporated as one of my amendments.
Okay, sure, sure.
I just wanted to clarify on that last one.
You're so disagreeable.
We're gonna leave the whole section in for tonight, or are we gonna just?
402.
Apparently 402 point two in. Did you want?
Well, I, I just saw this, I just got it when I walked in the room. But I have a couple of other concerns with maybe four. I think maybe we just leave the whole thing in there and we can come back to it. Because I think when you start getting into messing with lighting and window space and that kind of stuff, what I'm assuming we are going to find some of is people that are sleeping in attics basically with no light or a stairwell.
Wouldn't be alone.
Every bedroom has to have a window. That's not an option, so.
Okay, well, I mean, some attics have windows. I just, I just wanna, it's a little-
We'd have to rewrite it in English because I don't know how as a lawyer I could enforce this. I don't know how anyone else.
The reality is, is that people do sleep in attics and they do sleep in basements even if they're not defined as habitable space.
Correct.
But we've gotta find a way to talk more than cubic feet.
Yeah, but we have to get it to the point that, you know, I do agree.
I'm just, if we amend it, if we take it all the way out, then we gotta amend it all the way back. And I mean, maybe for just one more, I'm assuming this is gonna go a couple more readings. Maybe it'd be best to leave it in and maybe you sit down, two of you with some staff, and we try to iron out, because we want it to work for the landlords as well as anyone. But I think there's maybe some lighting things that may become issues.
Maybe you could draft something for the benefit of all of us. Because I'm not sure the benefit of two of us being in the room for this particular one. Because I don't think I can add anything to this discussion because, like I say, I don't understand hardly what it is.
And me and Steve can work through it. When you dump the whole thing, it makes me a little nervous.
But just speaking for myself, it's got to be in understandable English. I don't know what that means from a legal perspective. I don't know how you'd enforce that. And it seems to contradict, the other concern I have, is when we took out the concern in the window section back in section three oh four point one three, where we defined window far more reasonably. I'm concerned this puts it back by the back door, no pun intended, because it's talking about minimum surface area and all that. We already talked about not being unreasonable and, you know what I mean? I think that discussion, to a certain degree, if not to a large degree, carries over. Because, you know, a great amount of our old housing stock, they don't have windows that big. And that's not how we're really enforcing it in the real world. So I don't wanna write, that's part of this whole thing, is to write it as we really mean it.
And I'm sure we can make them jive.
I just wanted to let you know my two concerns, because if it comes back with those problems, I'm personally inclined just to take it out completely, which I guess is a really big incentive to writing it.
Yeah, I really do think we need to have hallway split, so I'm glad you brought that up because I didn't realize what the ramifications were. You know, we looked at it and we said, you know what, this had to do with the windows and lighting from the outside by the window, and we thought we were removing that. That's what I thought I was removing. But I do think that, you know, as far as the lighting in the hallways goes, if we can make that light, that wording a little bit easier and maybe apply to today's standards with the type of bulbs that are used.
Well, and the other thing about a habitable space, you know, okay, it must have a window of approved size. Approved concerns may facing directly opposite or to a court. And then the minimum total glazed area shall be eight percent of the floor area. No, I don't, you can't, you can't. There's no way in the real world that anyone, I don't even know what that means.
A ten by ten room would have to have eight feet of window.
And that's ridiculous.
Not.
And they don't.
Right, well, how many only have one window, though? I mean, I don't know that. It'd be hard to meet that.
That's over the top.
And we're saying in three oh four point, one point two, that every bedroom should have one window.
That's actually the-
At least one window. So we're covered there. What it doesn't cover is the rest of the habitable space, which is identified as where you live, eat, sleep.
Well, and the habitable space would also define, it would define the size of that window, which the section three oh four point one three does not. So I think it would apply to that. Because we're saying it's gotta have one window, and then over in section 402, we're saying it's got to be eight percent of the floor area of the room.
You know what we could do is, in section three oh four point one point two, instead of saying every bedroom, you could just say every habitable space because habitable, habitable room, excuse me, because that means living, sleeping, cooking, or eating.
We thought that actually was excessive.
Yeah.
We don't think every, that's what we currently have, by the way.
But that's what this is saying, every habitable space.
Just every bedroom.
If we don't repeal it.
If we don't repeal it right now, every room's gotta have these windows in the size.
And that's why we were trying to take that out. You know, there's reasonable. I can tell you that, you know, I have the wind, I've got one window after twenty-two years that I just finally got open and only because I had hail damage to the storm window and had to get it open. You know, that it's not, if we're talking health and safety, we need to kind of keep it to health and safety. But I also understand that Justin is one whose guys have to be able to get into these houses and get people out safely. So I wanna make sure we're taking into account the firemen and their job and making sure it can be done, but not having overkills. So I guess on that section, we just need to come up with some new wording when it comes to the lighting.
And part of it is, is there's a recognition, of course, that most houses in our community weren't built in the year 2009. So we need to be cognizant of the fact that, yes, there's an ideal for breaking in through the window to get to a fire. But if in two-thirds of the cases in our community, that can't be done, I'm now making a rule, which we currently have, that requires landlords to a higher standard than reality and that we're enforcing against anyone else. And I just, that makes me very uncomfortable.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if that, if 402 point one is taken out and in the page before, we're only talking about windows in a bedroom. But in case of a fire, there should be, I think there probably should be a window somewhere else, whether in the living room or the kitchen. But it's not required, but we're taking it out that it's required, is what I'm saying. So there should be at least one, another place beside a bedroom that we have, they have to have a window.
Well, but openable, well-
Am I misreading that?
Well, no, but I'm just saying that have you not been in a condominium where the only, the inside and you've got a unit on each side, you've got a hallway at the front, and your only windows are on the backside of the condo? I mean, it-
It seems to me if you're most likely to need to go out of a window, wouldn't it be when you're sleeping?
Because don't you, I mean, you'd have to have like entrance and doors anyway.
Because again, there is the ideal standard and then there's the fact that most of our houses were built before, way before nineteen seventy-eight when those came into the forest.
That's not, you cannot do that.
Because you're concerned windows or just lighting?
Well, one was egress lighting. You know, on the window deal, I mean, I think if we need in the window, we're gonna use the city's key and it-
It's gonna go through my wall insulation with no trouble, I guarantee.
Some of the issues really that we see from the fire service side is we had a lot of older, large Victorian homes that were built in probably the early nineteen hundreds that were converted. At some point in those code, the time they were converted, they were, you know, there was fire escapes required. There was stuff that, and then is never, some of them have never been maintained. It's a little scary to me from an inspection side of things and just fire code commentary in general that you would allow windows that don't function because you ultimately could be confusing people. But if it's their own personal residence, we can probably, hopefully it will work, you know? But it is, I mean, there, I have windows in my house that don't open.
Well, that's the thing, the minimum, should you, certainly should have at least one that opens in the bedroom if you wake up to a fire.
You really-
But if you have six windows, our current code says they all have to work. That's cosmetic.
Right, so in my dining room, if I have, I have one, two, three, four, five, six windows in my dining room. And the current code would mandate that every single one of them have to open. I guess I-
Fully function.
And fully function, open and be held open with the window hardware. I don't know, Justin, it just seems like it might never be done.
Have you re-rope your windows?
I can see that.
Have you re-rope your windows? Yours are rope.
But even, but even on a new house, I've got-
The current code requires you to do that.
The middle one doesn't open at all. The only two side ones do.
Right, that's what I was thinking of.
So now I'm not in compliant either.
That's the point.
No, except for, the International Property Maintenance Code says, except those that are stationary. So that would be a stationary.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, let's work, let's work on windows. Can we leave it in and work on?
We'll leave it on for now.
So that has to adjust then, by the language.
I have to really stick to the viewpoint for me.
Page nine, yeah, page nine.
Yes. I just tried to make it clear, because I'll grant you, the original red, the red cross through there is not as clear. I hope the green is clear. In regular English, what it means is, look, you're supposed to, for the next year, you should register during the month of December, by December thirty-first, if that's a business day. And if you're late during the first ninety days, so every thirty days or part thereof, so if I pay on January second, I'm gonna owe the one thirty-day late fee. If I pay on February fifth, I'm gonna owe two. If I pay on March tenth, I'm gonna owe three. But if it's suddenly now April, those monthly late fees, I'm still gonna owe the first three months, but those don't keep accruing. Now you get a different penalty because somebody's now, you know, a whole quarter late. We're talking, you've gotta have a significant disincent to that. And our current code doesn't at all. Then, then they have to pay a registration late fee, which is much higher. It's much higher because the city shouldn't be used as a bank to pay your bill for a whole four months late.
Okay.
And I think that's fair. And it's also possible that if you've got folks in there, look, you've been renting a full quarter without being legal. Yeah, you should, there should be a penalty for that. I mean, that's, that's not right. I mean, if we don't have any teeth in the law, then we've written a law that, again, is a nod and a wink. Well, we've written it to look pretty, but we don't really enforce it, and we can't have that.
So you're proposing just three, because I read yours and Al's at the same time right now. Do you wanna have a non-registration fee and a late fee, or?
No, if you, if you in essence pay during January, it's due during the month of December. I put December in because otherwise you could be getting renewals in October, September. Or I'd get really clever and pay five years in advance in October because you haven't told me I can. And I'd try to get ahead of your fee increase. I don't think that's fair.
Okay, but I, but I think what she's asking is, this is just renewal. What about the first time registration?
Oh, if it's new, then it's under the new construction. It's within, is it thirty days of it's getting its hack?
New construction.
For newly constructed, well, that's the next one. But what about if it's a not newly constructed, it's a house that is purchased for rental? It's not new construction or renewal. You get me?
Yes, I do, and I'm not sure it covers that. Let me-
Have we had that in there?
I'm not sure. That's a good point.
I thought we did, too.
I'm not sure.
No, I think it's still in there somewhere.
Is it?
To register such property with-
Okay, it's in A, it's in A above. I got it, I got it, yeah.
Oh, it's in A above. Oh, 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 okay.
Okay, all right.
So in essence, I believe-
I think I was asking a different, I was just looking at Al's that says, we don't have a late fee on this right now, right? Do we have a late fee?
It's a joke.
Late fee for non-registration.
It's a joke. It's like, how much is it?
So this is what you're proposing then?
Late fee for non-registration.
That's what I'm trying to figure out with all this.
But not tonight, because there's no number on it.
I think that's the current, I think that's just proposed.
This is, this is for future.
That's just for public reading.
Sorry, what's the current late fee?
The current late fee is one dollar a day with a maximum of thirty dollar rule for three months.
So if I'm a quarter late, I just have to pay you thirty dollars? That's not, right.
Okay, so is this part of this?
That's what I was trying to get to, yeah.
Is this part of this?
Separate from that, but in conjunction with it.
So it's separate, but it's not on the agenda tonight? It's gonna be on next time?
That's correct.
When this has to be part of-
The schedule of fees.
Schedule fee is a separate action.
Right.
Okay, I understand.
And the reason for that is then you don't have to worry about accidentally changing anything else other than a number if you put it all in one spot.
But we would have to know what these fees are for sure gonna be before we push this through so that the landlords would know what to effect.
Well, these are, this is what's proposed right now.
There is a proposed right now.
I mean, that's why, that's why Steve gave that to you, because that's what's proposed right now.
Right.
And I would say this, that there was a request by several landlords that they be able to pay those fees on a yearly basis instead of every two years. Well, the thing about it is, is that it takes, if we got, during that period of time where people are registering, because it's not just paying the fee, it's registering. It gets very, very busy in the building department with just that activity. And so if we're doing it yearly instead of every two years, currently with the staff we've gotten with what's going on, we dropped that fee to thirty-five dollars. There's some concern that we would need a part-time person to do that. So the solution to that, that we discussed, was to ask that the goal be set to make this available to be paid online at some point. So then we don't have to worry about it. You'd be able to do your registration and pay online so that we just don't have a barrage of, you know, people coming in to do this and having to do the-
Yeah, if we double the amount of time, that's in essence doubling the amount of staff time that'll be necessary, rather than every other December, it'll be every December. We can't lower the proposed raise increase from fifty to thirty-five. It can't be lowered that much because we're gonna have, this program needs to be self-sustaining. So, and from what people told me, they were very concerned about the cost. So unless a lot of landlords tell me, no, we're okay with the fee going up to cover it, I don't see how we can go annually. You gotta pick.
But I do believe, you know, that we all agreed that, I mean, Nate and I and Steve in our conversation it was agreed that it shouldn't, that that should be a goal. We should be able to accomplish that. That's gotta be something that IT helps with and it gets done. But I just think, you know, that way it's open. If you wanna come in and pay, that's fine. But there's a lot of people that just make your life, like the IT guy's like, there you go, give me more work. But it's not something that I'm saying I'm expecting to have done by the first of the year. I'm saying it needs to be a goal. It needs to be set out as a goal because that's a lot of work on the part of the landlords and the staff here when it could just be streamlined so easily by being online. And I say easy because I'm not the one doing it.
Well, it's certainly easier for the end user, for landlord, anyone else, the more we can put all, as many as we reasonably can online. Certainly that is a goal, and that's why the, I think the mayor was very wise to create a separate department and to hire someone new. And they're working on that now actively, so I think, I think that's being covered.
I just wanted to assure everybody, we discussed it. We tried to find a solution to that. But once we, that fee got cut back so dramatically, there's, it has to support itself. And I don't wanna set it out, doom it from the beginning to go over budget and not be able to support itself. So I assure you that everybody will continue to work on getting those fees online, to where you can do it online. Okay, so can we move on to page ten?
If, if we can rewind just a little bit, since we're going through these sequentially.
Sure.
I forgot the discussion on seventeen point oh nine, zero, zero, five. And the concern that was brought to me was, was given the consequences later on of a finding of substantially out of compliance that the landlords wanted a little bit more specificity in the criteria. And what was, what was the recommended solution was coming back to the Dangerous Buildings Code, which does provide some fairly specific definitions of problems that address health and safety. And as you stated, since that's the primary focus of this ordinance.
On his, the top of his page nine, on ours, the bottom of page eight.
Yep.
That's a factual question. I would need great leaning on, does it mean the same thing?
And I have copies of, I have copies of that section of the Dangerous Buildings Code just so you can look through that and compare.
What's your question, Mr. Ringenberg?
Well, it wasn't so much a question as an observation that the landlord community wanted a little bit more definition as to the criteria under which they would be found substantially out of compliance because that triggers certain other authorities. And the request, as they put it to me, was could we apply the standards of the Dangerous Building Code to that substantially out of compliance? And here's the additional point.
Right, but we did away with substantially out of compliance in our amendment.
But we call it out of compliance.
We just call it out of compliance, and it says, shall be defined as a building classified as a dangerous structure or premises as described and defined in-
And he'd rather list one thing rather than the three or four we'd list, I think is the difference.
Right.
And I don't know what the substantive difference between those two areas, is I guess my question.
No, there was, there's a spot in here, Nate, where you, we'd find out of compliance.
Right.
Yeah, he just doesn't wanna define it and refer back to section one oh eight of the, you know, we did the 2009 IPMC, three oh four of the IPMC. He's saying only refer back to-
In my opinion, out of compliance doesn't mean we're gonna tear a building down or condemn it. That means you're out of compliance. It may mean that you might get a placard on the building, but that doesn't mean that the building department is gonna allow rehabilitation of that structure.
Does a baby mean knocked down?
Uniform code for the abatement of dangerous buildings takes effect when we're going to condemn the building, when that structure is absolutely to a point where it no longer can suffice as a dwelling.
Right, and-
But not up to that point.
Right, and the question is, is how are we going about defining substantially out of compliance?
Substantially is not being defined because it's not, it's not applicable.
No, I understand that. We're just saying that this is, this is how we've approached this elsewhere in the city codes that have been adopted.
And your point has merit too, Al, because there's, they do specify very well in their, like fourteen or fifteen points[1789.34] on what, what qualifies it. No, sir, I, I read that all day.
Oh, yeah, alright, I just wanna make, I hate having somebody who knows something in front of them.
From, and I met with Brian Rogers, I believe, and, and his, his suggestion was come up with a hierarchy of things so landlords know what's gonna be potentially condemnable or plac- a placard that is unsafe and unsafe. What are things that are necessary repairs and what are things that we can get to later?
That, that's even more better, you know, if, if you wanna do that.
We've done that and we've got that in, in a written form, but haven't presented that, um, because I really didn't think that was part of the ordinance. May, in retrospect, maybe that's something that you would wanna evaluate, but from my perspective, it's something I can give to my staff and say, this is what you're gonna be looking at for these hierarchies of importance.
Yep, just reading through those, those bits of the code, the Dangerous Buildings Code, you know, I read through those individual aspects and I thought, wow, that's, that's pretty clear and, and it's directed at, at safety issues, so just seemed to help clarify things somewhat.
Yes, sir.
Is, so from, from a substantive point of view, Steve, do you see any difference or any difference that would cause you concern if we went with Al's suggested reference change? Instead of referring to sections one oh eight, three oh four, three oh five and three oh six of the two thousand nine International Property Maintenance Code, we would defer to section three oh two of the uniform code for the abatement of dangerous buildings?
No, I have no, no objection to that at all.
We had three separate violations.
Well, from what he's handed to me-
You don't wanna replace all those with three oh two.
So are we saying then that-
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong side.
Yeah, Nate?
Excuse me, I might get the wrong one.
For his clarification, he did not wanna replace all of these three references with three oh two because three oh two is, you're like, you're on your way out. The building's on the way out.
Right.
The building could be out of compliance, but not unhaving-
But not, not ready to raise.
That is correct.
This mean, this means you're, you're, you can't salvage the building and you're done.
Alright, so what, what are we suggesting then to accomplish?
No change.
No change?
No change.
Is that the suggestion?
Because it's what your, like, list of how you said that you can have, like, this level, this level, that's kinda what you did with this by picking out like three of one, five of one, that's kind of the list.
You spent, I believe, a couple hours with Mr. Rogers on that.
And the hierarchy will be not part of the ordinance, but it's gonna be covered in the landlord class, is that right?
The current ordinance is drafted so that we direct him to create one.
This is one copy?
We don't tell him what it's in, what's in it. My concern with- My, my concern with telling him what's in it is then every time he changed the form, we'd have to change the ordinance and I, I don't see that as wise.
We need a copy of this.
Here, I'll go, I'll go with it.
Yeah, I don't want people to think that, you know, if they're found out of compliance, that it means they're getting the building torn down. I, I like the three separate violations of section three oh four or the five separate. To me, it, it indicates to me then that I can fix these things and my property's not gonna get pushed down.
Yeah.
If we go with this, the indication is if I'm out of compliance, there's gonna be a bulldozer at some point.
No, I, I, I'm afraid there still may be some confusion because that particular section comes under, it's entitled definitions and the intent of the section is to define substantially out of compliance.
It's, do you have this, this, this is the thing you'd rather, the standard you'd rather substitute?
Right, but so, but he's talking about, oh, here on the definitions.
Yeah, he'd make it out of compliance means this.
Al, are you talking about section one oh eight? Is that where you're referencing the definition?
Uh, page eight on this thing?
No, no. In the, where, where you're saying described, as described in section one oh eight of the two thousand nine IPMC.
It's three oh two.
It, three oh two, I, I would change it to section three oh two of the Dangerous Building Code.
He would get rid of the reference to one oh eight, three oh four, three oh five and three oh six in the Property Maintenance Code and-
Yeah, and I think Steve, I think Steve's issue with that is you're basically talking about different levels of out of compliance, you know? Like Steve said, you can have an out of compliance building and never, you could be out of compliance for-
But, but the section's not, not defining out of compliance, it's defining substantially out of compliance.
In what section are you referencing that is saying that, one oh eight or three oh two?
We're not, are we not all talking on the same-
I'm assuming one oh eight, section one oh eight.
Because he had that draft in mind and still had it in.
With, with respect, sir, I think the ordinance you have was amended to, to strike substantially out of compliance.
In my draft, that was the change and to be, and to be completely, again, Faraday's position, that I took that word out. That's the one change I made since I gave him a copy, so it's not in the one he has in front of him, so that may be some of the confusion.
That was what we talked about right when we got in.
I, I know, someone actually, one of the landlords actually pointed out to us that when I, when I, when I changed it to make it simpler based on some concerns which I agreed with, that should, should only have three tier classifications instead of four, I forgot to change the reference as to how I defined it. And so that, that's, that's on me, that's a, something I missed.
And had I been more observant, I would have recognized that on what I have right now.
And I'm glad somebody caught it.
Okay, so then, so this is correct.
I think there was a time in the past thirty years where we actually defined substantial or substantially out of compliance. And I think what we did at one time in this, you know, I, I can remember this term being used, is to find which sections dealt with life safety issues. And if you had multiple life safety issue problems, violations, then you were deemed to be substantially out of compliance. Or if you had multiple non-life safety violations, then you were not.
Right.
That was somewhere back in history.
It got really confusing and there was questions about, well, then at what point am I so out of compliance that I'm gonna get placarded? And then when we started looking at it, like, you know what, really?
Yeah, I do have one.
We can just have out of compliance. And out of compliance can mean that there's repairable items that can be fixed, out of compliance, you know? We left in the, the description, which was three separate violations of this code or five separate violations of this code can make you out of compliance. We didn't want it to be where it was so confusing, well, we got substantially out of compliance and out of compliance and at what point are you gonna placard me? And, and it got very confusing.
And that was, that was a concern raised by a couple different landlords and I had to agree because in my head I have a hard time keeping them straight. Yeah.
Okay.
In the list that I provided to you, the high priority are life safety items. The medium priority potentially could be life safety requirements and maybe not. And the others are not.
And, and for this purpose only, I jump ahead to tell you where we, we put that in, in, in this draft. It's on page ten, it's in the, it's roughly in the center of the page, just below the half, and it's subpart H, hierarchy list. Since we're talking about it, we might as well talk about it now.
We're not gonna get done before, um-
No, and at some point-
So we probably need to try to do a second. Oh, it'll go for another eight anyway.
Oh, in the red line, for some reason, the page number gets screwed up, I'm sorry, it is really page eleven. I don't know how.
So which one are you on, hierarchy list?
Oh.
It's actually, it's, it's second page ten, it's second page ten, if you really wanna-
Second page ten, aren't used to that. I didn't even realize that it had a message.
I, red line sometimes doesn't continue the page numbering, it's probably my misunderstanding of word twenty thirteen, but-
Alright, so moving forward with the ones that we've got on this amendment, if that's alright, we put back in what should have stayed in and that was the section eight inspections. But the, um, that's actually a federal thing, we can't take that out. So all we're saying is, is that if you go, if you have a section eight inspection, you have to provide each of those to the city and it exempts you then from that inspection process. And that's not an option, that's a law, we have to do that.
You still have to register though, which is a point that when I heard the first, I assumed the other doesn't and that, I was wrong. And so just so people are clear, federal law preempts inspections, not registration.
I actually had a question on that. So what we're saying is if they have a section eight inspection, the city has no right to inspect it?
Not as a regu- not as a regular, as part of the regular program.
Right, they can go in.
They can go in on complaint or emergency basis, yes.
And where's that, what, do you know what code site that's out of in the federal law?
It's, it's, it's in the federal law, it preempts us. So the state law that says we have to have an inspection program because we're over fifteen thousand is trumped. It's preempted by that federal law.
That's what we're being told.
No, I, I found it.
It's crazy.
What, can you tell me what code that's out of CFR? As I, I just, I mean, you're basically creating two-
Off the top of my head, no, I can get it to you.
Two di- different types of inspections.
They are, but it's federal money and they can do whatever they want with their money.
Yeah.
Well, the money they're appropriating, let me be clear.
Do you have the code site?
Not, I'll get it to you, not on me, no.
Okay.
I, I, I can't say I disagree with you, but it is what it is, so.
I don't, I, I personally don't see the logic in it, but I don't think we have any choice.
Tw- twenty-four CFR, part nine eighty-two.
That sounds right, how did you say it?
Yeah, that Justin.
Yeah.
Thank you, Al.
It's, uh, twenty-four CFR, part nine eighty-two.
Alright, so continuing on that, on second page ten. Sorry, uh, I apologize.
Hang on just a second.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm trying, trying to keep up here.
Oh.
Uh, the, the paragraph just preceding-
Yes.
Uh, section eight on requested inspections.
Yes.
I'm flexible on, on the language. I'm just, I, it just came to mind that perhaps we ought to be inserting some sort of incentive for a requested inspection because otherwise-
What do you mean, do you mean financial?
Not a tenant request, no, like, timing.
Oh, timing?
Or, or some, whether it's a financial incentive or, or they get cut a break on, on the, on the inspection cycle. Because otherwise, we're, we're not incentivizing landlords to be proactive enough to request an additional inspection.
Can we-
But that's tenant requested, not landlord requested there.
Well, so-
Upon the request of the owner or the operator of the property. I agree, but that's actually to their benefit. That was something we wanted to make sure was in there and that was in the last amendments. And it was because they said if my property is vacant right now and you could do the inspection while it's vacant, it's better for everybody. So that actually was something that was put in to help. Now incentivizing it, the problem is, is there, there's no money to incentivize right now. The fees got cut, like, extremely, so I would caution everybody. I don't, I, I want to do some incentive things. I got some emails with some really good ideas, but until we go through a year, I don't know how we would know if there's money to do it. And as far as lengthening the time of inspections, I don't know why you would do that. If we inspect it when it's convenient for them, rather than inspect it when it's convenient for the inspector, why would we wanna incentivize that?
One of the other opportunities I see that this is gonna do for us that we've never done is we've never held tenants accountable. And if we go through and we inspect your property, Al, this year, and then you get a bad tenant in there and they go through and they damage it based on our inspection which showed that you did comply, I would expect you to call me as a landlord and say, Steve, I need you to come look at this and document this because I'm gonna go take this guy to court and try to get my money back. But that to me is, is something that I think is gonna be a hugely useful tool for the, for the landlords.
If I may on that point briefly, um, I've heard for years and particularly the last month, two months really, talk about how we need to hold the, the tenants liable and I completely agree, but, but I, I caution us to remember that on the one hand, when we advocate for holding the tenants liable, it, it is a little inconsistent, by that I mean it is inconsistent, to, to tell tenants then that suddenly we're bringing the law down on them. If it's a change, it's been a change requested by many landlords and some landlords, not many, but some, are scaring tenants. Because when I get their letter and then when I talk with them, once they hear what it really does, that isn't how it was explained to them. So, and, and in some of those cases, it's, some of the biggest advocates for holding the tenants liable are then turning around and using the fact I gave what you wanted against this proposal. And, and I caution us to stay in good faith here. If you get something you want, then you need to be honest about it and can, and again, I'm not saying this is not the vast majority of people doing this, but some are. You need to be honest about it and say, look, I pushed for that, rather than say, than to try to, you know, keep the whole law from passing, use it as, as an excuse like I'm some big wanting, big government wanting to do that. I mean, you, you can't have your cake and eat it too.
Yeah, this was asked for and I, I did, I got several emails from tenants and this is what I've told them. Um, when I knew who the, who they were renting from and it was a landlord that I knew had requested this, I would just make sure that they knew your landlord was one of the ones that requested this. Two, that your landlord's really the only one that would be able to make this happen because they're the ones that are gonna have to say the property was damaged, was done by the tenant and they didn't give me notice. They're the ones that are gonna have to say, you know, they never told me the smoke detector was taken out. So it would only ever really, in a real world sense, get applied against a tenant because the landlord had it applied against the tenant. So I think tenants needed to understand that, that this was asked for by their landlords and it's only really gonna get applied against them in most cases because the landlord said they didn't give me notice.
And this is actually, if, if we speak of rights, this is actually respecting the property rights. And the other side of the coin of rights that we don't often talk about today in contemporary culture is responsibilities. And rights come with responsibilities and so the tenants have responsibility to do their part. And it, it's not fair that under the current code, the landlords are responsible for things they have absolutely no control over. I agree.
Let's move on because my cold sandwich is getting hot.
I know, we wanna eat.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure we've totally addressed the, the concern again because Steve, when, when we talked about this last time, I, I heard you say that you were looking for opportunities to cut the landlords' breaks when, when appropriate. And so i- if a landlord comes in and requests an inspection because he's trying to be proactive, he or she's trying to be proactive, do the right thing, and you feel as though that they have acted in good faith, can we perhaps inject a little bit of discretion into this so, so you can make that determination saying, okay, I'm gonna slip their next required inspection because I'm satisfied with what they're trying to accomplish?
I'd, I'd be uneasy with doing that, Al.
Okay.
What I would be not uneasy with is if, if Don Angeroth called me and I have never yet had a, a bad case with Don, not saying that he's a good landlord or bad, I think he's a good landlord, I think he's a good man. But if I got a complaint, that doesn't mean Don's gonna go on a bad list, sometimes things happen. Everybody makes mistakes, gosh, I make mistakes. The issue that, that I look at isn't so much would I cut him slack, but would we go look at their property when he called me? Say he, he had a tenant that, that he had to boot out and he got his house clean and he had an inspection that was gonna come up in a year and a half and says, Steve, can you come to me now? I gotta, it's vacant, we don't have to deal with it. Yeah, we're gonna do that.
Okay. And that's the incentive.
That's the incentive, that's what I'm trying to say is we're trying to make it easy for them to do that. But, you know, if Jean calls and says, Steve, I've got my property's vacant right now, I'm up this year for inspection, can you guys do it now while it's vacant? And that's what we want, to be able to have that ability to do. But then to waive next, you know, the next inspection in three years, no, we wouldn't wanna do that. And so maybe I misunderstood what Councilman Ringenberg was saying, but that's the way it sounded was that we would then give them some other incentive other than making it convenient.
See, that's the opportune time for my inspector to be there because they're gonna be photographed in every room. We're gonna have photographic documentation. So if we do go back to that, that requested inspection because they claim a tenant did something, we're gonna have documentations, hopefully that will show the area that, that is in question and we would have evidence to refute or approve of that, that move to go towards that, that tenant.
Okay, appreciate the discussion.
Alright, so, um, gee.
What page are we on?
We are on-
Placarding?
Second ten, second page ten.
Second page ten in placarding?
Second page ten. So, you know, that was amended because we took out the four classifications and made it three. So you'll see the changes there in green. What did we do on four, if this, after this, please? Oh, yeah, we took out anything that had to do with the substantially out of compliance because that's what we were doing. And then Nate already pointed out where we were addressing the hierarchy, hierarchy list, that the building official shall provide one, he's drawn one up and that list isn't part of the code because like Nate said, that'll have to change from time to time, which means then we'd have to keep revoting on this. We don't wanna do that.
And that's the prop, that's, that's something that is proper for regulation, a day-to-day change, that's not something I think we should set.
Nate, was, was that something that was added, the hierarchy list?
It was at the request of, I can think of one letter in particular, but I, Steve had the conversation.
No, I, I just didn't see it in, in the, in the copy that you forwarded to me, so.
Oh, it, it should be on second page ten.
Second page ten.
H?
Okay.
It's in green, yeah.
Yeah, what, what you forwarded to me here that I made a copy of just didn't quite, quite match up, no.
Oh.
So that-
Let's get him.
I'm sorry.
So you don't have it at all, you're, it's missing from your, the entire section is missing?
What do you got in the email? But it's on what they-
Oh, gotcha.
I do apologize, I-
Oh, I get you, that's not yours, okay.
I don't know why that'd be different.
I don't know why it'd be different.
Okay, so it's just that he had a different version, so we're-
It'd be easier if we get them on the second page then.
No, I, I-
Is that, I think it's not on.
But when I went through my draft, I was comparing my write-up to, to what he had sent to me.
I think, I think-
I, I, I have it, no.
He just doesn't have it on his draft because it wasn't in the electronic, I don't know.
So I wanted to make sure I wasn't.
I, I do apologize, I don't know how that happened.
So you wanna do A on second page ten? I think we're down, we should be here by now.
We're at H?
Yeah.
We're at H?
Yeah. Yeah, we're at A, 035A.
A, excuse me.
Just that change right there.
Yeah, there, it's confusing. It doesn't seem to be necessary. And this was a landlord-sponsored change, actually two or three of them, by my best recollection. And I agree, I don't see how it adds anything. It makes it confusing, so.
You know, and the thought on that was, guys, that if you have, a lot of people don't get married now, you know, you have two adults that aren't married, living in the property. The woman owns the house, the husband's name's not on title. He has two kids, an 18-year-old and a 19-year-old that are in college. You immediately exceeded this. And if somebody's actually renting out rooms in their house, then it automatically becomes a rooming house. So there's just no need for this, so we took that out.
Could you have that language out of both of them?
Yeah, it doesn't have anything that's confusing.
That one was on it, too, but I had actually gotten a couple before that, too, about people being concerned.
I had to.
About, you know, that whole situation, so.
And then jumping to page 13, again, we've talked about the training program. We authorize him to do it. I didn't want to put in the ordinance, because I don't think it's proper for the legislative branch to tell him how often and when must, what must be in it. But we just say, he can offer this program, and it's voluntary. Lots of people ask for it.
On that note, one of the emails asked me whether or not, if the landlord went to the class, then would we give them a break on their fees? It's not that I wouldn't want to do that, but again, we cut the fees to begin with, you know, going from 50 down to the 35. All of the numbers originally have been based on a $50 fee. Now that it's down to 35, until we've had a year under our belt to make sure this is going to be able to fund itself, I wouldn't do that. But I'm absolutely open to it. If it shows that everything's being funded, I would love to be able to make that break. I'd like everybody to go to the class, so.
Are they, are they charging, are we charging for the class?
No.
It's a free class?
It's a free class, but what they're saying is, then your registration fees, could you drop those fees, make them a little lower if you've attended the class? Well, I'm not opposed to that, but I know right now I wouldn't be in favor of it, just because we don't know where the money's going to end up.
Okay.
The next part is, we've already discussed in that, was in there last time. This isn't new. It was in the last amendment, at the last meeting. Just put it in gold, so that everybody could see this was the ones that Dick helped us add. This was in direct response to multiple landlord requests that we hold tenants responsible. So there is no change there from the last one.
Okay, one second.
Yeah, hate to rewind back to page 14.
Could you tell us the section?
You're 13. I think you're 13.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're 13, okay.
This is my.
You're 13.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Training program?
No. Building, subparagraph C, building official may make inspections of any rental property at any reasonable time, based upon code violation, determined by age of the area, nature of the building or premises, or condition of the entire area.
That's not a change, right?
No, it's already in there.
That's based on some court cases, to which we are subject to.
That's essentially the standard, to get an administrative search warrant.
Okay.
So that's not a change, Dick, that was in there always? Okay.
Do I understand the difference is, for a criminal warrant, you've got to have probable cause, that there's a crime happening at this place, at a specific time, as opposed to administrative warrant. I don't have to get the warrant, show that there's a problem at this residence at this time. I have to show I have a uniform program. I'm not picking on somebody.
Exactly.
Okay.
And Al, maybe that was a Fourth Amendment violation.
Well, not according to the circuit's address.
No, I'm not saying it's a Fourth Amendment violation. I'm saying it opens up the city to potential litigation, if we're now singling out neighborhoods based upon their age or the general nature of the area. So you're singling out properties and holding them potentially to a different standard than you are other areas.
Because the law says we can't do it, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't do it if we're singing out, just, let's say, I don't like a particular landlord, and I'm the inspector. That's not a legal reason why I'm suddenly inspecting all his properties. But if it's an area of town that's really old, probably I need to look at that a bit more, because it's really old. It's going to have more problems. Is that right?
Our plan is to, within a certain period of time, inspect them all.
Right.
Right, yeah.
This may be more of a priority sort of thing, as to which ones, the older units may be the ones we want, or a certain area or a certain building doesn't look just hunky-dory. It might be your justification, going there without going and getting a criminal search warrant to do it, because that's all we've been using in the past 10 years.
It just implied to me that the words implied that we were going to go into a given area of the city and start scrutinizing them a little bit more, and that's really going to be a kick in the teeth to certain parts of this town.
Well, it already would have been, because this isn't new. It's already been in there.
Well, I understand, but.
These are words. He's asking to change, he's asking to delete, to strike.
Right, but he's saying it's words of the court, and it's not an option.
Well, we can talk about, we can talk, we can create a little bit of history here about where we think the common sense boundaries of that are, which I think is how we would enforce it anyway.
But if it's already existing, and it's part of state law, I see no reason to monkey with it right now.
Well, I'm not saying monkey with the words, but just a brief discussion, so that he can make his point, which I don't think's different than how we'd enforce it.
If you just scratch or the conditions of the entire area, that address your concerns, Al?
That helps, because the civil litigation, you know, in the camera case, you know, put the standards such that, I'm not sure that would, that we would be sustaining litigation. And I realize that it's already there, but it doesn't necessarily put us in any better position if that challenge comes at a later point in time. I'm just saying that since we're already inspecting areas on a regular, on a regular basis, every three years, I'm not sure why we're going in and targeting certain areas based upon age.
Essentially, what we have to have, the administrative search warrant, is something to justify that over passage of time, buildings become worn out, closets break, things become in need of repair. And that's really the basis for administrative search warrant.
If we don't have that in there, we don't really have a standard, because we don't have to meet probable cause. So, I mean, we have to have a standard.
Well.
The standard's pretty much established by the courts. I mean, and, you know, our local courts historically have not been real thrilled about administrative search warrants. But I think there's been a lot of turnover since I ran into this issue 30 years ago, so I.
I guess, Nate, I would say that the standard placed in the section, in the sentence would then be based upon the need for code enforcement, period, without adding the additional language that, again, suggests a certain level of targeting.
But if we, if we take that out, then we, rather than keeping it to three, three things, we've opened it up to anything, have we not? Because this, by having a list of exclusion, it's limiting to these three things. And if we, if we just keep it a generic sentence, it's actually more broad. So I'm concerned that's.
And would open it up for more inspections on any.
Because you haven't limited to just those three things.
Well, I tell you, how about if we just stop at the second line, the need for code enforcement as required by state code?
There you go.
I would be fine with it.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep, I'm good.
Are you good?
Is required by state code?
As required by state code?
Yep.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Way to be agreeable.
Can we say state law?
State law.
State law, is that a problem? Because I want all types, okay.
By state law.
Okay.
Got it. Okay, now we're back to page.
I believe we are, unless Al had more on that page. I don't want to cut him off.
Page 15.
15. I throw in some language right now. We say he and she. I mean, some of these are corporate entities. That's just cleanup language. Those are its. I mean, that's nothing. And then the other thing is, if we can't find the owner, the landlord, right now it says we can post it on the property, and this just gives another option, either posting it or publishing it in the paper, like we have to do with certain other things. It's just another option, to try to find the landlord before we take action against them.
Right.
So it seems to their benefit.
Eighteen.
And then if you go to eight, page 18, which is section 17, point 12, point 010, there was some concern, which I totally understood, about the way it was drafted. It sounded, it could read like, what it was saying was, that it was creating an affirmative grant of new authority for other people, and some folks even asked if it included council members to suddenly start going inspecting houses. No, it's a savings clause, so I just made it clear. What I mean by that is, this is the housing code. So if another code applies to you, you can't say, uh-uh, you can't come in, criminal police department, with your criminal warrant, because it doesn't say in the housing code that you can. You see what I'm saying? That sounds a little ridiculous, but if you don't put that in there, you might have said that. So that's all it's saying. It's a defensive, look, this doesn't affect anything else, one way or the other. And I believe I've made it clear to say that. So that was, I believe that was a legitimate concern about the prior language. And that's it.
And we're almost there. Coming back to 1710, 090, vacation of placarded structures.
Yes, I'm sorry, 17.10.090?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Front 09.
Thank you.
And the reason for my insertion on placarding is, as it was read, if a, if a structure is placarded, the owner wouldn't have the ability to go in and remedy the violation. So I'm, so we're adding just some words to make it a little bit more clear, so that, you know, they get the proper work permits, they can get back in the building and get the work done.
Does occupy mean?
It doesn't say, it doesn't prohibit entering. It just says shall not occupy.
Well, but.
Well.
Shall rent or occupy?
Doesn't occupy mean live there, not just visit?
Well.
Well, let's go back to the definitions and see what occupy means.
I'm not sure that's defined, or does it?
Well, that's why, that's why I insert the words for the purpose of habitation, just to clarify that.
My only concern is, then, if in other parts, we just say occupy, and we don't put that in there, it's going to be presumed to be something different. And I'm not sure occupy ever means something other than live there.
Well, the most important part is subparagraph B, where I create that second subparagraph. And we're talking about, then, that ability to get back into the structure in order to make those repairs.
But it doesn't prohibit that, though, from the way I read this. It doesn't prohibit you going in and repairing. It just prohibits you from occupying or renting.
The function of it is, we put the placard on so that no one habitates in the structure. The landlord, prior to your passage of an ordinance, giving them a landlord license, legally couldn't do any work in their rental properties. We passed a landlord license, which allowed them to go in there and do that, up to a minimal standard. They still have to get permits. They still have to have a work access permit to go into the, into the structure and define who's in that building. But we have process already established, Al, that clearly lets them work and allows them to go into the structure when it's warranted.
Process, okay. I'm just saying, that was a concern that was, that was put out to me, just a request for a little bit more clarification, just to help clear that up. So.
I'm more than happy to say, as a matter of law, state of history, that occupy means live there. My concern is, if we, if we do amend it there, everywhere else, I'm going, we're going to have to find where the word occupy is.
No, no, I'm just saying, that's fine. You can strike that out of what I inserted as sub-A.
We haven't had definition of occupancy in.
Right.
Right.
So, so all I'm asking for at this point is to amend by adding that sub-B.
And that goes to my same point, though, because if we say, you can't occupy except, then what we're saying is, the word occupy would otherwise include working on your property, which would contradict our definition of occupy previously, and it's an ambiguity we've created.
Yeah, I think this is contradictory.
It just seems that there's been a misreading of it, and that, you know, as long as we make everybody aware, that's not, you know, the definitions in there should have never been read in that manner. And we can also have that be part of the class, since it seems to be an issue that people are concerned over. But, you know, we defined occupy, and occupy doesn't include working on the property.
Yeah.
So if we go start muddying it up now, it makes people, yeah, it's just going to be very unclear.
I think we're good.
So, so having done this, I think we've, have arrived at some degree of consensus on both of our sets of amendments.
And to check to see if that's the case, Al, if you, what I'd like to do, you have.
Start at page one, is that what you're saying?
No. I'd like to talk about the ones where I believe this draft, sharing my draft, was, we've agreed in this session to alter, so that when this gets changed, so that we can use it at seven.
Right.
Okay. So I think the first change we agreed to is on page six, my page six, 17.02.77. We include significant.
Yep, we agreed to that.
Okay. And right now, we've changed section 402. Right now, we're just keeping the whole thing in, because we're going to talk further about light.
Yes, but I want everybody, all the landlords, to know that it's not our intent to leave it in there permanently. I want it to adjust it, because some of that should not be in there.
All right. And so 17.02.100 on page eight, regarding occupiable workspaces. We X out the whole thing, correct?
Correct.
All right. On page 13, top of the page, subpart C, the building official may make inspections of any rental property at any appropriate time, based upon the need for code enforcement as required by state law.
Grab the sound.
Yes.
Okay. I believe that is it. Am I correct?
Does that cover everything?
With regard to the ones we agreed with. I know there are ones we haven't agreed to, but the ones we've agreed with.
Those are the ones I agree with, and had made note, I did.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm a little confused as to what we did.
Well, we didn't do your subsection B. We stopped.